All right. Good evening. This is the City of Groton Committee of the Whole for Monday, August 23, 2021. Roll call. Court Patrick, or Court Patrick, where did that come from? I have no idea. Court Peters, Megan Peters, please.
Present, we have Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Gwenda Veritipo, Councilor Rashad Carter, Councilor Lisa McCabe, Councilor Christine Piazza, Councilor Stephen Sheffield, City Clerk Megan Peters, and excused is Councilor Paul Norris.
Okay, thank you. All right. The first item that we're going to discuss is 793, the American Rescue Plan Act. And so we'll, we have with us today Jim Butler, the Executive Director from the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. Jim, if I could get you to come forward and do we, do we want him there or here?
Well, I have the camera set up for over here.
Okay, then let's do that. That way we get Jim on camera.
I'm not sure that's a good idea, but.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Good.
I'll wait till the mayor's off the phone.
Okay, got it. He's waiting to get in. My apologies. Jim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Council. How are you? Thanks for having me, and I'll.
Hold on, Jim, if you're more comfortable taking the mask off, you can, because you're six-foot distance.
Thank you, sir.
So, we're going to ma- as long as we maintain our six-foot distancing.
You can see the face my mother described as made for radio, not, not zooming or streaming. Um, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you for having me. I'm the Executive Director of the Council of Governments, and as you know, the City of Groton is one of our 22-member municipalities.
I'm Steve Mansfield, on the call.
Hi, Steve.
Steve, we'll get to you in a minute. Jim's doing his presentation. All right, go ahead, Jim. My apologies.
No worries, sir. The genesis for the request before you tonight was at a Council of Governments call, Zoom call, to discuss how towns might use funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. We knew towns were just beginning to form committees, councils, and Board of Selectmen were holding town-wide meetings to discuss how you might expend your ARPA funds. That's what we call the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And as you probably know, if my figures are correct, Groton City is scheduled to receive a municipal allocation of just over $906,000 and a county allocation of 1.73 million plus. If I could pause there for a minute and explain what the county allocation is. In other states, they have county government, and those states were scheduled to send to, are sending to their counties lots of money under ARPA, more than the towns and cities were receiving individually. In Connecticut, we weren't going to get that money. And CCM, councils of government, individual municipalities stood up, talked to the EDA, Economic Development Administration, and convinced them to also send county monies to Connecticut directly to municipalities. So, in southeastern Connecticut, our municipalities are going to receive almost $54 million in the county allocation. So, as I started to say before, the genesis of our request was at this June meeting of the COG, held virtually, where we were discussing among COG members how you might use your early ARPA money. As you probably have had discussions already, you know there are very specific areas you can use that money in, but once you're in that category, it's a pretty flexible program. One of our, not chief elected official, excuse me, one of our city managers asked the COG, "Well, you're not getting any money. Could you use any of this money?" So, that got us to thinking. I've been in touch with other COG directors. For the last year and a half, my staff and I, principally myself and Amanda Kennedy, our deputy director, have assisted our 22-member municipalities, however they needed us to assist them in beginning their COVID recovery and now ongoing efforts. This ranged from holding and hosting weekly calls with our health directors and all the chief elected officials, the two tribes, the Coast Guard Academy, the United States Naval Submarine Base. We provided support to our region's human service agencies, which have had such a big role in pandemic response. We were told we had to staff a regional resource recovery steering committee, which we set up. It's a Demis Region Force Steering Committee, so it also involves the Northeast Connecticut Council of Governments. And the state had us set this up under the state's Homeland Security and Emergency Response Framework, though we didn't receive any funding for it. My work even involved purchasing masks on behalf of six or seven towns in seat. I actually had to negotiate a deal with a broker who was buying masks from China, and I had to oversee their delivery to the City of New London in the middle of the night. Fortunately, the mayor is a neighbor and a good friend of mine. The fire chief is a personal friend of mine, and a fire station in New London stepped up because I didn't know how I was going to explain to my wife around 3:00 in the morning they were being delivered to our garage. In any event, we got those out to the towns the very next day or two days later. You know, this is work we never contemplated doing, but we've done a lot of things during this pandemic that we never contemplated doing. I told you all this just to let you know what we can provide to our towns. We'll do whatever the towns ask us to do. So, when that city manager suggested to me, gee, maybe a small portion of the funds could be used to create a position at the COG, and we've called this position Recovery, Regional Recovery Coordinator, made a lot of sense to us. At the July meeting, the Council of Governments voted unanimously to support or endorse the creation of such a position in a request to our municipalities for a voluntary assessment. Not one time, but four times. It would be spread over four years, the life of ARPA funding, to our municipalities. And what we've asked for is 1% of each of our municipalities' county funding. That's 0.25% per year over four years. For the City of Groton, which currently annually contributes $5,714 in annual dues, which are set by state statute, it's based on population, this 1% of your county contribution, a quarter of a percent per year, would be $4,300. The total money it would raise from the region, if every town participated, would be a little over $130,000, which would allow us to hire a staff person at a senior level and fully benefit that person. So, we're thinking a salary range in the $70,000, $80,000 range, which is what our most senior planners are earning. Excuse me. It would pay for their benefits, their FICA, their social security, their life insurance, et cetera. And it would allow for the expenditure of funds on any direct costs associated with the position. I envision this position doing what I've been doing for the last year and a half. I'll still be doing it. I'll be overseeing it. But the person would also become an expert on the grant requirements of the program, would assist our municipalities in your grant reporting. We just received this document, and maybe someone in city government has received it, Treasury's Portal for Recipient Reporting. And I'm just starting to go through this. It's somewhat complex. Not that city staff couldn't handle that. I'm sure they could. But they've got a lot of work to do on their own, too. We envision this Recovery Coordinator assisting our towns with coming up with ideas for your second wave or second tranche of funding. You're getting two tranches, as you know. You're probably working on figuring out how to spend the first right now. This person could hold municipal, municipal public information sessions or regional recovery sessions. I can go on and on. I'm grateful for you to allow me the opportunity to present to you our request in person. I'm happy to provide more information or answer your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I did just think of one thing that Amanda and I spoke about at the office just the other day. In addition to the monies that I noted that each municipality is going to receive from ARPA, there's going to be a lot of other American Rescue Plan Act and Future Act money, including the infrastructure bill we know that the administration is working with Congress on, money that will flow to the region. And this Recovery Coordinator, if we hire such a person, could be involved in assisting our towns in applying for these grants, helping the Council of Governments apply for region-wide grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sheffield, do you have the floor?
Yes, so this salaried position, is this not for just four years? Is this for a permanent position? Or is that determined?
It was noted in the job description, it would be until the funding runs out. So, that would be, as I envision or, as I see it, foresee it, I should say, it would be no more than a four-year period. Should we decide to keep the person on, it would have, that person would be funded under other funds that COG has available to it or would have available to it at the time.
Okay, so this is.
In fact, I'd point out, if we don't receive all of this money, the Council of Governments use, the Executive Committee could direct me just to hire somebody part-time or contractually.
Okay, so currently you have it full-time?
Yes, sir.
Four years?
That is correct, Counsel.
Based on the American Rescue Plan Act?
That is correct. If we were to receive full funding, it would be roughly $130,000 a year times four years.
Okay.
And our assessment is only going to be for four years?
Yes, I thought.
So, we would not incur.
Right.
We would not incur a long-term debt or commitment?
Right.
That's correct.
Very good.
Is that you? Deputy Mayor, Devoe?
So, for us, it would be $4,300 a year.
Correct.
I, personally, I think, you know, obviously, we have a staff, but I don't know that this is something we want to add on to what our staff is already doing. So, I think for that amount of money, that it's a great idea for, especially for a small municipality like us. It's a lot of work to wade through all the regulations and everything, so I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I should have said at the outset, I've told the Council of Governments, no matter what, whether this position's funded or not, we're still going to be here for our municipalities. We've done it for the last 18 months. Heck, we've done it for the last 50 years. I hope you view us as a resource and, and an extension of your staff, if you will, on anything. We work very closely with your planners, with your economic development specialists. We know this one particularly well because she interned in my office. And we're very proud that she was able to obtain a job here in the City of Groton, so.
Any other questions from staff, from staff, sorry. Any other questions from Council? Comments? Counselor Norris?
So essentially, what we're trying to say is even if we do not approve this and fund this, you're still going to be there for our basic needs.
You have my commitment. Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
This is, this is a special thing. So, Ron and I talked a little bit about this. Let me give you some other information that you may or may not know. The, the town is debating on what they're going to do. They have, I think it's seven or almost $8 million. And so, they're thinking about maybe doing their own, their own coordinator. But we don't, you know, we're looking at 2.6 million total. I don't think we have enough that I can, that I, makes sense to me to have another coordinator. But, am I not right on 2.6? Okay. So, I don't think we have enough that I need to hire another coordinator. Ron thinks he's okay. We could, this could be beneficial to us, understanding that this individual's going to be spread out amongst the other municipalities as well. So, it's not like we're going to have 100% to us, but it would give Ron some backup, I think. I think it may give, and what I mean by that is I think it's going to be more useful upfront, identifying what we're legally allowed to go after and do because there are some complexities to this. And the thing that I think most finance directors and most CEOs are wrestling with is if you don't do it right, they could say, nope, you don't get that money. It's got to come out of hide. So, now it comes out of your own budget. And that's something that, that we are very sensitive to, and I know the other municipalities are sensitive to as well. So, I did want to give you that information, not to taint you one way or the other, but to let you know where other people are. Now, there are other, a lot of municipalities that have said, yep, we're going to, we're going to get on board with this. And it also helps regionally. So, that's another thing. For full disclosure, I am on the Executive, Executive Committee, and I did vote to bring this to the full committee of the COG and then, and did support this in Executive Committee. So, now you have that as well. So, let me go to first-hand, Counselor McCabe.
I was just going to say, I actually think it might be a good idea to have somebody that's actually working with other communities because that person could bring ideas of what other communities are planning to do with the money. And it, it gives me a little more confidence that if other communities are going forward with it, it would be something that wouldn't turn around and be something that's not permissible under the funding rules.
Thank you, Counselor. Town Manager Bert did contact me a couple of weeks ago, and he told me, Jim, we support the idea, but we're probably going to hire our own Recovery Coordinator. In fact, Deputy, my Deputy Director Amanda Kennedy will be meeting with the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole tomorrow night for the same purpose that I'm here tonight. I, I had a thought after I had communicated with Mr. Bert, and I, and I contacted him, and I said, John, I said, you're a regional-thinking person. I said, keep in mind, even if you don't, your council chooses not to financially fund this, this person will still help the town of Groton, too. Rising tide raises all boats. We like to think regionally, and if all of our towns are doing well, even if Groton has their own, and as many of you know, or maybe you don't know, I was Groton Town's Planning Director before this job. I was their Planning Director for 12 years. Worked very closely with the city. At the time, we used to send a city planner over here. So, I know a lot about regionalism. I know a lot about Groton. Fortunately, Mr. Burton and the mayor agreed, and is having our staff in tomorrow to talk to them about the same thing we're talking about tonight. I did want to add one other thing. Counselor Norris, you asked me about whether or not we would support any town, whether they financially provided funding or not. Yes, we will. But I should have also added, we have been asked by COG members, well, what do we do if, I don't know, 15 towns support it and the other seven don't? Will we provide any less service in those towns? So, if there was a direct service, let's say we were doing all the financial reporting potentially for those 15 towns, but seven towns chose not to fund us because they had their own coordinator, they'll probably do their own financial reporting. So, whatever we can, we'll help all of our towns, but those that subscribe to the service, just like we send planners out now to, we have seven contracts with six of our towns to send a planner to them, towns that don't have their own planner. That's probably how this will work.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Norris, you had the, you had the floor?
I have had the pleasure of working with you.
Thank you, sir.
And I know you are a man of impeccable integrity.
Thank you.
My question is, I don't doubt for a moment what you and your staff will give the city. What I question is, if the city is going to put money towards this, I'm going to call it a partnership, over and beyond what the services we already receive from your establishment, and other municipalities are not, what do we get in extra for our dollars and cents?
That's a terrific question. And that, that's, it's one that, you know, as I'm thinking to give you a response that makes sense, it's difficult to quantify that at this time. I would work with our leadership, which is our Executive Committee. As Mayor Hedrick mentioned, he's a member of the Executive Committee. I would seek, I would make recommendations to them and then seek their guidance, follow their lead. I guess you'd get a little more attention, but we're doing that to all 22 of our towns. Now, regarding municipal dues, forget the voluntary assessment we're talking about. State statute says if a municipality doesn't pay its annual municipal assessment, it doesn't get services from the COG. That's spelled out, so it's real clear. It's in the law. And about 10 years ago, I had an unnamed town come to me, a mayor. You might be able to guess the town because there's only a few that have mayors. He said, we're not going to pay COG dues. I have to lay off teachers. We're talking about laying off cops. What am I going to do? He said, can you prove the value of the COG to me? I said, give me a day. And I wrote him a 10-page memo, and I showed him everything we did for that municipality over a certain period of time. And there was a lot of money having, being a member of the Council of Governments brought to that municipality. Amanda and I were just talking today. We don't do a good job as the Council of Governments in selling what we do. We don't have a PR firm or a PR person. We're proud of our work. I'm always happy to stand up and talk with any about, anybody about what our chief elected officials do when they collectively come together and give direction to our staff. So, I'm not sure I have a good answer for you, other than to promise you, you'll get your $4,300 worth. That was sort of a joke. You're going to get more than that. You're going to get more than that, I promise.
If I may, and I'm jumping out of turn here.
Please.
I will support this, and I'm going to tell you why I support it. It's because you are a man of your word.
Thank you, Counsel. That means a lot to me.
I've known you for a long time. There's never been a moment where I've doubted your integrity. So, I feel very confident that you will provide the guidance and the tools that the city is seeking.
Thank you very much, sir.
Any other Counsel?
Will you come with us to the Town of Groton Committee of the Whole tomorrow night? We're going to need some help. We're going to need some help. I hope they're watching right now.
Any other Counselors? Okay, that's it. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel. Have a good evening.
Okay. The next up is Steve Mansfield. You may know him. He is the Director of Ledgely Health District. And so, Steve has come to the city with a request. And Steve, I will turn, turn the floor over to you. We, okay, do we need to raise the volume on the, are you guys okay? All right, go ahead, Steve.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for giving me your opportunity to listen to your request for a small amount of a small portion of the City of Groton American Rescue Plan funding. As you know, Ledgely Health District is the municipal health department of the City of Groton. The two towns that formed Ledgely Health District all those years ago, the City of Groton and the Town of Groton, what I experienced when I joined Ledgely Health District back in 1998. As I mentioned to my, in my correspondence to Mayor Hedrick, health districts across Connecticut did not receive a dedicated rescue plan funding stream, but instead expected to reach out to their respective municipalities for a portion of their funding, similar to what was done for the coronavirus funding stream last year. Municipal health departments actually are in a different position than municipalities, as you can imagine. Say, the City of Parkhurst, the City of McAvon, they are actually municipal health departments. And although we operate within the same statutes, state statutes, have the same responsibilities, they get their funding directly through the municipality, where Ledgely Health District and all the other health districts in the state of Connecticut have to reach out to our municipalities for, to request a portion of that funding. So, with last year's funding stream that I mentioned, all of our municipalities contributed, all of them contributed 20% of their total allocation during that first COVID funding. With this current rescue plan allocation, we're asking each of our municipalities to contribute 1% of their total funding over that entire period, not just 1% each year, but we're looking at the total amount. So, we see in Groton, this request is just over $26,000. To date, the towns of Larkhurst, Groton, and Northstone are all allocating this funding to Ledgely Health District. And we've gotten, I would say, agreements with the other municipalities, and they will consider and look through that process. So, it's generally been well-received. And I think 1% is a very useful figure. $26,000 may not sound like a, a lot of money, but when you multiply the funding amount times knowing the municipality to make up Ledgely Health District, it is, it's a significant amount of money that will go a long way toward continuing to do everything we have to do to combat the pandemic and to fill positions that need to be filled and so forth. So, thank you very much for your consideration. I know I forwarded to Jill Rust the spreadsheet of what we plan on spending this money on, and I believe she forwarded that to everyone here tonight. So, on that basis, are there any questions regarding that spreadsheet or anything else? Thank you very much.
Okay. Open the floor. Counsel? Counselor Sheffield?
Yes, thank you for, for this presentation. I would like to know, are you looking to fill additional positions, I guess, for part of this program you're setting up for this funding? Are there going to be?
Yes. Yeah, so we will be funding positions, but not really new positions. So, and I'm sorry, if you need to just clarify, is everyone looking at these spreadsheet categories?
Yep. That's the American Rescue Plan municipal request justification?
That's it.
Yes, sir.
So, item number nine, I'm sorry, item number five, public health nurse salary in Fringe. So, we spread that out now over FY '23, '24, and '25. And we actually have already hired, just through the vetting process, one additional public health nurse. So, regardless of whether or not all our municipalities provide us with 1%, we identified that through our thought analysis in the middle of the pandemic, we identified that to be one of our primary needs. We have two full-time public health nurses on staff, but with all of the contact tracing and everything else that goes along with the pandemic, we decided from an operational standpoint, that was a position that Ledgely Health District needed. Coincidentally, it is one of the categories that is allowable. So, that's for public health nurses. The community health worker, number seven, that's the second physician, again, spread over '22, '23, '24, '25. And that is to support all of the work we do. If you've been following the pandemic, a lot of the work we do recently is getting to those populations that are underserved, who aren't getting vaccinated at the rates of the rest of our, of our communities. So, we have a number of community health workers on staff already, bilingual. They can get out into the community and hopefully get the accurate information into people's hands so they can make an informed decision. This will just be another person and, and to that contrary, about people. The only other, the only item on here, and we don't plan on hiring anybody, but item number six, expand at the neurological capacity. Previously, actually, right before I became Director of Health, we had a full-time epidemiologist. When we did some restructure, and when we decided that a full-time epidemiologist wasn't the best use of the money for our municipalities, and we utilized the state epidemiologist as much as we needed to, which, and I'll say, no, non-war time, that was a good idea. The pandemic has shown us that we really need more epidemiological capacity. So, we did put money in for those respective years to contract with an individual or organization to do that epidemiological work that the Department of Public Health here at Walter doesn't have the capacity to do at the local level. And that's it as far as personnel costs associated with our request.
Okay. Anybody else from the Council? Counselor Norris?
Can you please explain to me what you mean by epidemiologist functions that will be happening that will benefit the city over the next two or three years?
Sure. It's a great question. So, for those of you who are public health professionals, epidemiology is the study of diseases in populations. It doesn't have to do with individual health, but rather, public health, looking at the aggregate. So, when we have a full-time epidemiologist, what we do is, one of our ten essential services is to look at the health of our community and decide where there are public health issues, and subsequently allocate resources to address those public health issues. So, what we found during the pandemic is, as you can imagine, the public and our municipal leaders and everyone was really clamoring for data. We didn't have the capacity to break down the information regarding COVID-19 to the level that we wanted to. We still don't have that capacity. We just simply don't have the resources necessary to get down further in a municipal basis. And right now, we rely largely on the Department of Public Health to provide those weekly reports that I sent out to everyone. That's right. Those weekly reports aren't really good. But if we had that additional epidemiological capacity, we would be able to do that data analysis at a more regular level, beyond just municipalities or zip codes. And that would provide us with more relevant information regarding the health status of our community. So, we don't have to focus just on COVID. If we look at indicators of illness, if mortality rates, drug use, things like that, if we can look at them on a townwide basis, it gives us a much better perspective on how we can allocate our limited resources in the coming years. So, that's the short answer to a very deep question.
Thank you much for the response, but then I have as a question. So, this epidemiology, is it a, on, is it a permanent position, or is it a position that will only last temporarily two or three years?
So, right now, what we're, one of the things we're. So right now, what we're, one of the things we're going to be using this funding for is to contract either an individual or an organization to provide that capacity. We may decide that we want to hire a full-time epidemiologist, or perhaps a part-time epidemiologist, and we would actually become a fully of the General District. That's part of our workforce development and succession planning plan. We do have a subcommittee under our board of directors that is exploring that possibility. So in the short term, it's going to be contracted. In the longer term, we're going to consider whether we want to hire a position of the medical department over Ledgely Health District staff.
Right. Thank you before anyone else steals my microphone here. Two questions. So what do we get for $26,000? What is our benefit to the city specifically for $26,000?
So I think a mirror of some response, you did a lot more than, or something like that, a lot more than $26,000.
Got it.
This is, I'll say, a, a small request from the city of Groton that will go a long way towards supporting a lot of the things that we want to do, but necessarily don't necessarily have the money to do. For instance, we've been running our mass vaccination clinics in all of our pop-up targeted clinics in our communities, having a 15-year-old F-150 that has a lot of rust in it, a cap that doesn't block. And I'm not here to say that you can't afford to purchase a new vehicle. It's not up there on our list of priorities when we're trying to be honest in not increasing the per capita rates of the charging number in the municipality. So when we became aware of this funding stream, that's one of the things that we identified. We will make our staff more efficient, as most of you know, the majority, I think more than 70% of our mass vaccination clinics are placed at the Groton City Municipal Building. And I'm sure of the Groton City staff that were there observing us and assisting us with setting up those clinics. Although we have a certain professional group of people to run those clinics, the infrastructure is a bit lacking. So better infrastructure, better preparation. And again, another big one, what we will see is better communication. And I am proud of the way our organization has communicated throughout the pandemic, but we can do better for sure. If you follow us on our social media platforms and so forth, you'll see the mind-wise reason, the mind-wise narrative, what is my reason for getting vaccinated? We hired a local videographer to do basically stories of people in our communities who were perhaps on the fence about getting vaccinated. Professionally done, we kind of reached out on the fly, and we saw a need, and we allocated four funds for that. So we plan on developing that significantly more. Yeah, so those are just a couple of examples, but one thing that you'll get, whether or not you lose this $26,000 or not, we're nice to work with community members to isolate quarantine. I just gave approval to my hiring committee to hire an additional contact tracer. As you know, the cases of COVID in our community, everyone has free treatment at the moment. And our contact tracers reported back was that they simply couldn't keep up because there is a dear of the contact tracers at state level. The money has been pulled in other directions, and they've greatly reduced the workforce. So we have to do that work at the local level. So we will see a continued, thorough response to contact tracing needs in our community because we're ahead of the game for public health to finance until that point. So this is what we're going to hire.
Awesome. So can you tell me how much money you're actually receiving from the American or the federal rescue fund?
Yeah, if you look at our line item 41 on the municipal spreadsheet that we're, the total amount that we're receiving from all our nine municipalities.
No, directly from the American Rescue Fund. Are you getting money directly from the American Rescue Fund?
We are not.
Okay.
The only one we're asking for is 1% from each of our municipal offices.
Got it. In that case, one last question, sir, and I apologize for holding your time, is if we do, one, I'm assuming that $26,000 is a one-time expense? Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the thing is, if we do not approve this and allocate this $26,000 to your establishment, what do we lose?
You won't lose anything.
Other than, right, not necessarily what we're gonna gain, but do we lose anything?
Yeah, you won't lose anything. You know, we're allowed to provide public health services, and we're required to provide regardless of whether or not we prove this $26,000. Most of the things that I talked about tonight, have they have either been approved by me for purchase or hired? It's just what we need to do. So if you do not approve this, you will still get all these services. It's just, you won't be contributing to the cost of the, of the coming out of my general operating budget or I'll give them to my designated fund balance, or essentially my rainy day fund to purchase the costs. But that's why the American Rescue Fund is here, to help support us in responding to the pandemic and building our organizations and municipalities so we're better prepared next time.
Thank you very much for your candor.
Counsel?
Yeah, one more question, Steve.
Counselor Sheffield, do you have the floor?
Steve, do you have anybody in the data analytics as far as how the pandemic and the numbers that we need to analyze to make projections as far as response, as far as, you know, how we prepare in our municipalities as far as masking and vaccinations and all that? Do you have anybody on staff that can analyze that data in advance to make your projections and, you know, to, you know, better serve the epidemiologist and so forth, so?
Yes, absolutely. So in my position, that's a lot of what I do, our two public health nurses, my deputy director, Jennifer Maggio, we're on top of all of that data now. And we do have the ability to project what we may need. And that's, that's why we build our, our workforce and our capabilities as we move forward. I think a really great example of that is, many of you probably have the unfortunate experience of having to register to get your vaccine through the VAM system, the Vaccine Access Management System. You also remember that shortly after VAMs went into place, Ledgely Health District was at the forefront of petitioning the Connecticut Department of Public Health to allow us to still receive vaccine and conduct our mass vaccination clinics, but not use the VAM system because it was not used differently. It was, there were so many glitches and problems with it. It was really more work than it was worth, with all due respect to those people who developed it and chose it. So we developed our own internal registration system, which we use to this day. We use it for, for everything we do when we have to register people for any types of services. So, you know, we have the capability, again, what the money that we are asking for will support those capabilities and allow us to do that.
Anyone else? So I want, okay, go ahead. Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Mansfield, I just had, this might be off the cuff. I just, and represent, I've been on a couple of phone calls with, mask calls with Joe Courtney. And a lot that's brought up is reference, you were bringing up the communication capacity. And a lot of it is people who don't get communications due to non-access of computers and so forth. So I wanted to see actually where you're driving off the path on that, what other kind, how else would you be communicating? And also, including in that is, how is it expanded out to the homeless population in each community?
Sure, great questions. And I mentioned before, on the spreadsheet, I have a community health worker. We do have multiple community health workers. And that's essentially what they do. They go out into the community looking for people, homeless included, in all of our municipalities who need not just vaccinations or testing, but perhaps services to assist them with, with getting housing or getting treatment for substance use disorder. So it's something that's part of our core functions every day, those community health workers. So that's, I think, probably the most effective and efficient way to get to those communities. We have one particular clinic in Old Line, no less, that more than 75% of the people who came to this clinic, and there are about, I think, about 400 people who came to it, were recruited by one Spanish-speaking community health worker centered in the city of New Line. And so the majority of people who went to Old Line didn't live in Old Line. So that is critical communication of getting people to work in the communities where they live, they're trusted sources of information. Those are the people that are listened to and trusted. I can't go into certain communities as Director of Health and, and get the same types of response. So I think that's probably the best example of the, of the communication that we've been doing in our communities to, to get people to take advantage of the testing, to understand the codes, of getting the vaccine to protect their families and so forth. So we've been really successful, and we have received a lot of recognition statewide for that work.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, I do want to remind the council, we have a longstanding relationship with Ledgely Light, but it was exercised quite a bit in the last 18 months due to COVID. We established COVID clinics here. Steve and I talked about, I wanted to get testing here, we did that. I also wanted to see if we could get clinics, and we talked about using the auditorium as a center for clinics, and we did that, and we had the vaccines here. Steve is also, Ledgely Light has coordinated with us and worked with us to bring vaccines into the community and actually take it to different locations. We've had clinics at, at food pantries, at St. John's. We brought it to Branford Manor and to other locations here in the city of Groton in order to bring the vaccines to vulnerable populations. Last year, when many of the restaurants were shut down and therefore they weren't throwing a lot of food away, we noticed an increase in rodent issues. And so we had a couple of areas that had an increase in rodents, and we got Ledgely Light involved to help us work with that little area in the city of Groton to identify and help eradicate that situation. So they have been extremely helpful to the city of Groton. Did, oh, okay, sorry. Counselor Norris?
I understand the tremendous amount of work that Ledgely Light has done. I also understand that there, there are dollars available from the state in terms of moving forward with health issues related specifically to COVID, COVID communication, COVID promotion, getting people vaccinated, various locations of getting the, the COVID vaccination administered. What I don't want to get into is providing $26,000 as an award for the work that you've done so admirably in the past year, year and a half. So I wrestle with the decision of, what is $26,000 gonna get the city of Groton that we do not currently have or not going to have or will not supplant what the state of Connecticut will provide, various health districts, and also health departments within municipalities? So I, I go back to, if we don't provide this $26,000, what happens? Is it, you don't get to hire a nurse, but you really do because she's really, oh, I shouldn't say she, so I apologize for that, the person is already hired? Or is it, if we do not provide the $26,000, we don't do a clinic or a social media marketing campaign on the benefits of COVID vaccinations within the city? So that, that's what I'm wrestling with. Because I, I can see, because there's gonna be so many organizations coming here to city saying, give us 4,000, 5,000, 20,000, 30,000, and this is what we're gonna do.
I hardly just heard your question because I, I'm not sure how much clearer it says to the others. If you don't, if you vote not to give us this $26,000, I promise you, you will still get the, the services that I described, okay? If you don't, we will pay for it another way. You won't be contributing, the city of Groton would be contributing to all of these things that we think are really critical. So yes, you could opt out, if that's your decision. But I want to be clear about your last point. We're not another organization coming to you asking for support. We are, per Connecticut statute, your health department, just like the city of Groton has a billing department and a planning department, and all of the other things that are part of municipal government. We are an arm of government, and by statute, we are your health department. So if, if that wasn't clear, and I'm sorry, I should have started by saying, really consider Ledgely Health District to be like any other municipal department? Because that's exactly what we are, per statute. We're not a nonprofit. We're not any other type of organization that is saying, hey, Groton, you've got a lot of money, but we want to show you that. What we're saying is, we're your health department, and we lead the charge in the COVID response. And 1% is, I think, a very reasonable amount to ask for.
I also apologize if I insinuated that you are another, or a separate organization. I, I do understand who you are, the value to who you are, the state statute and procedures that you provide us, and it's admirable, and we couldn't exist without you. So I, I do apologize for that.
Any other comments from the council? Seeing none. Thank you, Steve. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks, everyone. As always, feel free to reach out if there's something I didn't cover or you made something new.
Okay, thank you. All right. Rain gardens? And that brings us to Heidi. And if you want to take your mask, you can.
Thank you. So thank you for having us here tonight. Myself and Bill Robarge from the Public Works Department are here to ask you to consider funding a rain garden installation here at the city municipal building. Rain gardens are considered green infrastructure installations, and green infrastructure investments and projects that address the impacts of climate change are strongly encouraged under ARPA. It kind of goes along with the, the clean water and stormwater management. To give you a little bit of background, the city, back in the fall of 2020, had coordinated with the Yukon Stormwater Corps. It was a group of interns at Yukon that was in their, their land use, their land use school. What they had done is they'd come down, they had walked through the city, they walked along the city municipal property, and they came back with, with several recommendations on different things that, that we could do here in the city to, to increase our stormwater management. There were, they focused here in the city municipal building because we are in the Baker Cove watershed. So any opportunity that we have to, to address the, the water infiltration locally in, in this watershed will have a huge impact on the waters of Long Island Sound. So, so with that, they had focused on two areas within, within the city municipal building, partly right out in the front, I refer to it as the front green. So it would be one of the corners on the front green. And then there would be one just, just opposite the, the parking lot, sort of a little, what we call a little swale area. I don't know if Jill had included those in your pack, thank you. So if we were considered and awarded this funding, we would be able to treat approximately 230,000 gallons of stormwater runoff just in those two locations alone. By treating that, that amount of runoff each year, we would be able to reduce the nitrogen and phosphorus that's going into, into the Baker Cove. It would be about two and a half pounds of nitrogen and just over a third of a pound of phosphorus per year. And, you know, in nitrogen and phosphorus, they both have impacts on, on the water quality and the aquatic life locally. One of the things that... One of the things that the Baker Cove Committee is really focusing on is the impairments and its effects on the shell fishing locally. So, again, any opportunity that we have to address those stormwater issues and those impairments certainly is near and dear to all of us. The City of Groton also is an MS4 community. So, by permit, we are required to reduce our impervious area. We're supposed to be reducing it by 2% over the term of the permit. We have currently met that requirement, however, with all of the construction, the residential and industrial construction, the requirement that we have met is slowly dwindling away. So, again, by having these types of installations, we're allowed to, we're also allowed to address the impervious area disconnection. So, what we would be looking for is approximately $25,000. That would, we would be able to put in anywhere from 1,500 to 1,600 square feet of rain garden here. That would include all of the labor and the equipment and any other items that we would need to purchase for that. So, thank you.
Okay, questions from the council? Councilor McCabe?
So, to create a rain garden, I've never heard of a rain garden before, so I need a little background. Are you taking impervious surfaces and making them?
So, what the rain garden would do, what the intent of the rain garden is, is actually, so we're actually taking a grassy area. But what we're going to do is we would actually remove the curbing and, you know, one of the things that we look at and one of the things that the Stormwater Corps had looked at is the topography of the area. So, once we remove the curbing and we put a depression in the grassy area and then put in, you know, the sandy soils and all of the things that need to be there for the infiltration, that then will actually take runoff from, I believe, if the area was. So, each drainage area ranged from 6,000 square feet to, one was 2,000 square feet, the other was 6,000 square feet. So, because of the topography, that's the amount of drainage area that that one site might.
So, we create drainage that goes into our storm drains, it heads out?
No, it actually goes directly into the ground.
Okay.
So, what's pretty cool about this is that this acts like a sponge. So, the water that normally would go through sheet flow into our stormwater drains now goes into this rain garden and a swell, if you will, and then gets percolated through and then gets filtered out and it goes into the water table.
Okay, so, we have two options here. You said around $25,000?
It would be about $25,000 to do both.
To do both? Okay, so it's not really like option or one or two, it's 25 to do one and two?
To do both of them, yes. And we really had hoped, they sort of work in tandem, so we had really hoped to do both at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Carter?
Hello. I don't know, maybe I missed it. So, there's two questions. How long have you guys been working on this? Sorry.
How long have you guys been working on this? And what was the reasoning on why we started working on this?
So, we started working on it and we'd reached out to the Stormwater Corps in the fall of 2020. One of the benefits of being an MS4 community is there's lots of workshops and there's been lots of collaborations. We work very closely with the folks up at Yukon Clear to help us sort of, you know, get through the day to day of how to meet the terms of these permits. So, with working with the professors up there, they have this particular Corps who, it was, I actually believe it was a graduate study program. So, they had come out, they, you know, they went through, they walked through the city and determined specific areas that would benefit from this. One of the reasons we're sort of really focusing on it now is I, as a member of the Public Works Department, I'm also a member of the Baker Cove Watershed Committee. And, you know, that has really been a focus of that particular group is, you know, how do we start to clean our waters and, you know, what monies might be available out there? You know, I'm also hoping at some point that this becomes sort of an educational tool. It's front and center. I mean, I don't think you can get, you know, a greater opportunity here at the City Municipal Building to sort of highlight something like that. So, you know, maybe once we have that out there, you know, folks in the community will see that and, you know, there's ways that they can benefit from that in their own, your own yard.
Okay, I got you. I was just trying to figure out if it's something that we needed or is it something that's just an opportunity because we have funds coming? But I think it's more towards the latter. It's a good opportunity to kind of, like, we don't need it, so to speak, do we?
We'd like it.
We'd like it and we have the opportunity to get it, so that's the reason why you're presenting it, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to differentiate the two as far as.
We, myself and Steve Beaker, our supervisor, you know, had sort of walked the property in the spring and really trying to determine how we could do that. And, you know, $25,000 to our budget is a little bit of a hit. So, we were looking at other, you know, were there some things we could cut out? And, you know, with this funding available, it would allow us to do exactly what we want to do.
Yeah, one of the things, I asked Heidi to go back and look at projects that are on the burner because if you go back and look at the ARPA funds and the presentation I gave in the beginning, okay.
Yeah, I got you. I haven't heard this and I heard it, so I'm like, what is this, is this something we need or? But now it makes sense.
MS4 is a clear cutout and we have requirements and the state requirement, the state is, every year, the state is adding new requirements to MS4. And it is a challenge and, but we're meeting those and Heidi's doing that, Heidi has a lead on that. And we're meeting those challenges. This is another opportunity to help with, it's called Backwack, Baker Cove Watershed Committee. And the final intent is to try to clean up water quality in the Baker Cove so that we can get back to recreational clamming. And you say, "Well, wait a minute, what does this have to do with that?" Well, it's all tied together. As to where is, this is all part of Birch Plain Creek, which goes into Baker Cove and that's how it's all tied together. Any, Councilor Shephill?
What is the estimated cost, do we know, for this project to get started or?
Yeah, so, we were estimating it at about $25,000. You know, in doing the research on this, the cost for installation ranges anywhere from $5 to $45 a square foot, which would put this square footage anywhere from $7,500 to $67,000. And kind of looking at some of the types of things, the types of plants, the types of rocks that we would want to use in there, we thought $25,000 was a reasonable estimate. We're also looking at covering our labor costs with this as well.
Councilor McCabe?
I think I lost my train of thought.
Okay, Councilor Norris?
Thank you so much for bringing this to us and taking the time to be innovative. How much, cubic feet, cubic yards, how much are we talking about?
So, we're looking at about 1,500 to 1,600 square feet combined with the two installations that we're looking at.
So, is that space that you are working with? Or is that the amount of cubic yards, cubic feet of water or runoff that you're anticipating that we would divert elsewhere?
So, the 1,500 to 1,600 square feet is the amount of space that we would be working with. The amount of drainage area that we're looking at for one of the installations is just under 6,000 square feet and then the other installation is about 2,000 square feet. So, that would be the amount of drainage area that it would be affecting.
Well done. The other part to that is, so when we talk about timeframe, when are you looking to get this done?
We would hope for early spring of 2022.
Got it.
We would like to start in the growing season, so that would be March or April.
Sure. And this is not a budget, fiscal year '22 budgeted item within your department?
It is not.
Okay. And it's not, is it part of your CIP project?
It is not.
Okay. So, the other part to that is then, do you have an idea or anyone? In terms of, at the end of fiscal year '21, end of year fiscal year 2019, '18, generally speaking, how much does Public Works, here's an odd terminology here, not use or give back to the city at the end of each fiscal year?
We're a little bit of an anomaly because we're actually funded by the Town of Groton.
Okay.
So, I think Director Uhas might be able to answer that a little bit better?
It's ranged anywhere from going over?
It's ranged from year to year. Typically, we try to spend what is allocated from the town. We have gone over last year, I believe it was, '21, when we had the theme street retaining wall and we went back to the town with that. But normally, they tried to have a zero budget, it's a pretty tight budget. That's the end goal.
Thank you.
So, well, let me answer your question, let me give you some additional information. So, the Special Act that created the city in 1964 has a sentence in there that says, "The town is responsible for those monies that are necessary and proper for the repairing and making of roads, including roads that are, including town roads that are in the City of Groton." So, roads and highways budget is paid for by the town, including that money is returned. So, the tax base that the city provides to the town, part of that money is returned in roads and highways and in 50%, by tradition, in 50% of the police budget minus the chief's salary. So, CIP's, all the budget in total is put in and then the town council votes on that and then it's done. It doesn't go through the RTM because the Special Act talks about that the town council is going to do it. This was not in this year's CIP. It was not in the budget for this year. We were looking at it, we've been looking at it, but I hadn't authorized putting it in the budget yet. But when the ARPA funds come out, I said, "Okay, this is an opportunity for concrete infrastructure work that we know can be covered by these funds in order to do this." And that's why I asked Heidi, "Take a look at what projects you have and come forward to the council" and that's why we're here today. So, does that further answer your question?
Yes, but I got to, it just created more questions.
Well, I'm sure you do.
I apologize. So, this $26,000 that you're asking for is not part of the general fund? It's coming from some other type of funding?
It's coming from the ARPA funds.
Okay. So, the next question is, who's actually doing the work? Is it city staff or is it going to be contracted out?
No, we fully intend to do all of the work internally with public work staff.
Got it. And then the next question is, I'm sorry, usually it's the hot seat, but you're in the hot spot. All right. So, the other part to that is, when you talk about educational tools, I would have loved to have heard to help me get behind this is what the educational tools are to help people not understand what you did, but what is the benefit of what we're doing with Baker's Cove and everything else and global warming? Because I absolutely get it and I'm behind the thought and the philosophy of what you're trying to do. So, it's almost as if like I wish I had more information to get 100% behind it, even though I'm 99% behind it. So, it's, I really wish that it was part of a bigger conversation and how we roll that into a bigger plan, but I am behind it. I'm just trying to see how we could put the pieces together because the last thing I want to do is say to our city constituents, "We spent $26,000 to do something, but they don't understand the benefit of what we're doing." So, even if it's something as a interpretive sign, educational landmark that says what we did, how we did, what, it benefited us, but I didn't hear that. You know, what I pretty much heard was, "We got some extra funding, we kind of need to spend it, let's find something to spend it on and here it is." So, I just hope that is the direction that we move to eventually, even though I am, don't get this wrong, I am behind it 100% or 99%.
If I'm able to respond to that, I can tell you that that has really been, I've been in this position for two years now and one of the things that I really have been trying to focus on is public education and public outreach. I think two years ago, the mayor had done a series of snippet videos that we had posted on the city's Facebook page. We just did the rain garden initiative. So, we really are trying to get that information out there. You know, also working through with the Baker Cove Watershed Committee, we've just created, you know, a brochure, sort of explaining some of the installations that you can do residentially to help with some of these impairments. So, I can tell you, my commitment is that public education and public outreach is a huge part of this job and trying to find ways to get that out there has been a little bit difficult, especially with COVID. But we are utilizing social media and trying other ways to move forward with that outreach. So, we welcome ideas, if you have ideas, on things that we can do to improve that, certainly, reach out and let me know.
But I'm going to end with this. I'm trying to understand what the $26,000 is because I don't have a breakdown of what the $26,000 is. Is it people hours? Is it by two minutes material? Is it underground drainage? I have zero information that says what that $26,000 is. So, I ask in the future, if we could do that, then at least I know because the way I sit right now, $26,000 is blacktop.
Sure. No, I understand that.
All right, thank you.
So...
And I don't mean that against you.
Oh, no, 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 I understand.
So, one of the things that we're doing here, if you've noticed since you guys have been on the council, is that I am bringing different departments in to bring you up on things that we've been working on for years. Some of you know about them, some of you don't. Some of the projects are new, some of them are continuing and moving forward. Some of them are behind the scenes things that we try to promote on the website and through Facebook. So, we will continue to try to bring information up to the council so that you guys have a better understanding and are comfortable with things that I bring up, bring for you to vote. Some of it I'm not going to know until I bring it up here. Once we bring it here, then I can find out where the weak areas are that we need to shore up, one, for a specific initiative and two, for me for the future so that we're there and I can anticipate the questions that the council may ask. So, let's see, Deputy Mayor, depot.
I also think it's a good idea to piggyback on what Councilor Norris said. It might be a cool idea because I know a lot of people come to the Municipal Building when the trees bloom there. So, it might be nice how they have in a museum or at parks or wherever with an explanation of what those gardens are for. Because even in the sample picture that you have, it's like a really pretty garden. So, I'm sure that we'll have the same kind of thing. People will, when they're walking their dog, you know, Washington Park, they'll also come down this way and go to the trees and the gardens. So, I think that would be cool to have a sign with the educational information on there. And I know that the Baker's Cove watershed issue has been brought before us before and discussed on how to improve that and I am excited. Every step we make is a little bit of an improvement. It's difficult to make big strides in that area and I know a lot of people are very interested in getting that area cleaned up or, you know, fixed up so that they can clam over there. So, I'm excited to move something forward for it.
Councilor McCabe?
Yeah, I also agree, having a plaque or some sort of information, but also even, you made a comment about how people could even start doing something like this in their yards. I'm interested, I want to know. What could I do as a citizen to participate? So, I mean, let's take it one step further. And I had a question for you, Mayor. You answered one already because I wanted, what I forgot, what I was going to say was, was this eligible for the ARPA? Are you sure?
Yes, it is eligible for ARPA.
Okay, and I know that, you know, we're getting allocated a certain amount of money over the next few years. Do we have a certain amount that we need to spend? So, we need to have projects or is... So we need to have projects or is it will it run out or will they take back unused funds?
Yeah, yeah, so. We're going to get two allocations of funds. We've already received one allocation, one point three million. Next year, we'll get an additional one point three million and then we have a total of four years to spend the money.
Okay.
If we do not spend the money, the money will go back. If we spend the money incorrectly and cannot justify correctly in accordance with their requirements we're spending money on, then they will not allow you to spend the money. They won't give you, you know, they want you to spend it and it comes out of your budget. So that's why we're, you know, sensitive to this. So I'm not, let me make this clear to the council. I'm not looking at this as found money and saying, okay, we got to spend it all. I am looking at this as there are projects that we have been talking about doing and now we have an avenue to where we could use some of the money. Some of the money is going to go to social service projects. Some of the money is going to go to infrastructure projects. I am sensitive to what monies are out there and the expenditure of monies. I am very fiscally conservative. I don't look at this as, okay, we got to spend two point six million dollars because I want to make sure that if we do spend it, we spend it on the right thing. And that's important. And that's why we're going to be coming to council with the different projects and the different things that we're trying to do. Now, uh, hold on. Could you, when could you have the breakdown of cost on this project?
I can probably have that tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, any any other questions on this? Counsel Piazza.
Thank you. Uh, thanks Heidi for all the work you've put into it. I really appreciate that. I just wanted to ask on here, I did read in reference to the one part of it is you were talking about twenty five thousand dollars and part of the cons is regular maintenance. So would that be included within that monies or would that be uh hopefully in the future brought into the budget as far as regular maintenance of it?
So in terms of maintenance, um, when we first started talking about this project, actually, we had a conversation with Mary Hill, the Parks and Rec Director, uh, because ultimately it's on the 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 parcel, the property that that her folks maintain. So um they would do the basic initial maintenance, which is just ensuring that, you know, the the when the the lawn is mowed, that the grass clippings don't get blown um into this. Um, leaves in the in the fall are um, you know, raked out. Um, you know, but if we were to need um additional um wood chips or anything like that, we would start building that into the budget. So if there were things that we need would need to add back over time, um, those are things that we could add back into the budget.
And my other comment is um, uh, kind of piggybacking off what Counsel McCabe said as far as like residents and so forth. But I think this would be a great project to extend out into the schools and reach out even to the elementary, even to the maybe the um summer program that they have. And uh there's, I mean, there's a lot, the schools have a lot of things, even reaching uh the summer programs that the kids are in. That could be part of the project as far as them learning about it, maybe developing their own little rain garden and so and so on. And, you know, and encouraging and then obviously getting out to the residents. But I think we, you know, start younger. And maybe even in this and maintenance, getting people who are interested in this field that they actually could volunteer. We could develop a volunteer organization for that to help maintain it.
Well, if I can respond to that, um, so actually, one of the things that um that myself and my counterpart at the town have been doing is um collaborating with the new director of curriculum of that, Project Oceanology. Um, and she's just been awarded, um, it's called a B WET grant. Um, but it's actually to go out into the to the Groton school system um and do some educational components. And this is one of the things that she is looking at um taking with her because of thought processes that, you know, the 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 younger, you can start that education, um, the 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 more thoughtful um they'll be as they get older with some of the the conservation efforts.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Heidi, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the tree, the water garden, the rain garden that we have out here with the tree has a placard that explains the purpose of it and what it is for and what it does for the environment, right? If it was, it was there.
Yeah.
Okay, so Counsel Norris, to address one of your concerns about uh having information so that from the educational component, we have a placard already at one of our rain gardens. We would, we would duplicate that at these to make so that people understand what it is, what the purpose of it is and that kind of thing. Uh, I think the placard is, you know, it's something like this and it's metal. So, oh, I'm sorry, Mary?
Yeah, it's actually.
Oh, okay. Yes, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, they anything that does with a environmental education person would be.
Yep, absolutely. Uh, we, the rain garden here, we got it, there was a grant that came through. Who's the one that works with us at the back?
So it's actually a tree filter. There's multiple tree filters here on on city property. Um, and that was actually done with a grant through the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District.
Just as a quick quick question follow up because it, when she started saying so the school kids, which I love the school kids, I have school kids and everything else. That's good. But even it just got me thinking, even our highway department, are we sure that they're capable of even building this? I don't even know how extensive it is. What if it whatever they build fails and we need somebody to actually really build us this one that's going to be pretty sustainable and that? You know, have we thought about that? Or do we know if you guys are capable of building it? It's just a question.
Yeah, I mean, so um, you know, like I said, I spent some time with um with Steve Beaker. Um, earlier this spring, we kind of walked the property. He feels pretty confident. I I can tell you, I feel pretty confident. One of the things that um that we are um, we're lucky to have some of the relationships and the collaborations that we have. Um, one of them is with the 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 group up at Yukon. Um, so actually, the uh, so Dr. Dietz, who oversees the program up there, um, and we can certainly get this out on social media. He created a rain garden app um that is actually, you can download it.
Okay, so it's not nothing that takes like, you don't have to be Einstein to build it? Is that what you're pretty much saying?
Our guy, our guys are, our guys are 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 very talented.
I'm just, I'm just being honest. I don't know, you know, it's just.
Yeah, so what it is is we really just take, we really just take the curbing. Um, so we'll remove the curbing. Um, and then what they'll do is we'll go in with either an excavator or a piece of our equipment um and and really just sort of scoop out. Um, the typically a rain garden is about s- uh six inches in depth. Um, and then they'll be, they'll probably be, depending on the type of soil we have, um, we might need to put some additives in there. When I say additives, it's probably something like sand to make it um, you know, more of a a a a surface.
I got you, I know. I just, I just, okay, I got you.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Counsel McKee.
One last question. Um, are you going to be bringing us multiple projects? So we're not hearing a project, voting on a project kind of thing at the next meeting? Or is it something so that we can more holistically?
All right, let me ask you a question. What is, what is the, because I was about to ask you for this, for these three things. Are you, do you have enough information to move forward to the next mayor and council meeting? Or do you want me to wait until I get a list of things that you guys get to pick and choose from? And those kinds of things. Your concern may be that if you approve something upfront, there may be something really delicious at the end, but we're out of money kind of thing. The one of the challenges you run into here is the clock is ticking already on the funds.
Right.
I know that uh the executive director is interested in trying to get that funded. Steve Mansfield is interested in trying to get that funded so we can get it started. But I will move at the pace of the council, but I need to know what that is. And I also need to, I need to get a sense, now, we don't vote during the Cal, but I'd like to get a sense that if I bring something to you at a council meeting, that it's going to pass. Now, I understand I can't ask for for commitments and you say yes. But if you, if you vote no because you don't have enough information, then what I'm going to ask is, do you need more information? And if you need more information, I will give you as much information as you need, as long as you need it in order. Because I think I don't tend to bring things to you as a whim, right? I and and I do, I bring things to you that I think are good for the city with an expectation that they will pass. Now, having said that, it is my responsibility to provide you the information that you need and give you the education, give you the components, get the experts to come here and talk to you about them so that you are comfortable in an affirmative decision. And so if I'm not doing that, then one, I need to know that here from council that, no, we're not ready to move forward. So uh we'll go to Deputy Mayor Depot first.
Um, I was actually thinking the same thing. I think what what would be helpful is, would we be able to, anytime these things are brought forward, particularly to vote on, but maybe even at the Cal, if we could have basically like a one sheet that shows approved, you know, total balance of what we're getting from the ARPA funds, approved projects, projects maybe in the pipeline that don't have to have specifics, but maybe like Public Works, three projects, fifty K estimated, um, you know, whatever. And so we can kind of see where we're at. So when we vote on things, um, we can kind of gauge what's happening with those funds.
Because I will tell you that I've asked Director Hill to look at Parks and Rec stuff because Parks and Rec stuff is a cutout in the ARPA funds. I, she is, she, it's on her plate. She doesn't have the projects yet. Uh, there's other people that I've talked to about infrastructure and they're going to be coming, but they have, they, they're not here yet. Um, there, I do know that there are other social programs that will come to us uh that I don't know about yet. So you're right. I mean, I could, I can, uh, I understand what you're looking for. I and we'll do our best to to give you something, but we are in our infancy stage of trying to figure this. And I am shaking the trees to try to get people to come out. Continue, please, continue.
Just to add to that, maybe too, on that one sheet, like a quick paragraph of what qualifies.
Yep.
I know that's going to be really hard because I know that it's probably a thirty page document explaining what you can get with the funds, but um, so that we have an idea of which departments might be coming forward in the future, even if it's not in the pipeline yet.
Understand. Okay, Counsel McKee.
Yeah, I just, just, I I hundred percent agree that I I would also really like to have that that forward thinking. Um, at the the projects that you brought forward this week, I I feel comfortable that they're all valuable um things to to go after. And at the the amounts that they're, you know, we've started off with, I think we've got a long way to go. So I'm not really worried about the budget running out or anything like that at this point. I just want to understand this, how we're going to proceed to evaluate this.
And the town is doing a similar thing. We have a long-term recovery committee that things are getting floated back and forth and they're looking at it. Then eventually going to go to the town or go to the town council. I know uh Jim presented to Long-Term Recovery Committee, Steve Mansfield presented to the Long-Term Recovery Committee. They're going to be presenting to the count, town councils soon. Um, Social Services has presented. Actually, the town went through all the agencies that they fund and had them present. Now, I don't plan on having all those people come forward. There are a couple that uh I am probably going to bring to you uh for your consideration. And there are a couple that have sent out. For example, Sector has asked for one percent and I have not uh brought her yet, but I'll probably bring her next meeting. I mean, and this is the other thing too, is that, you know, you can see we've already spent the amount of time that we've spent now just on these three things. So uh, you know, I'm not trying to drag this out, but at the same time, we could spend half a day going through some of the projects. Anything else? So. Yep. Understand. Uh, I'm sorry, Director Uhas.
So I just want to clarify what I heard and what the expectation is going forward. So you want to put a spreadsheet together that we're going to have our total received of the one point three million. Underneath that, all of the approved projects that have come, that have gone through council already to come to a subtotal that has, this is what's been kind of remaining unapproved. Then underneath that, have all of the proposed projects that are in the queue to come down with our bottom line net and then to include as best we can definition of eligible cost on there to kind of walk through it. Okay, because the one thing is, I I if I recall, and I I'm not a hundred percent, I have to double check. I don't think we can pre-spend the second funding.
You can't.
So just so we're kind of working with that first one point three. And then, but we'll factor that in as to when it's projected to come in. So you can kind of see that with the proposed as well. So that way, everything's laid out on one sheet. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was following.
Okay, Counsel Norris. Well, you had your hand up. I mean, at this point, we're multiple speakers, so I don't think it matters.
I I I apologize. I go back, you're off the hot spot. Um, what's the plan?
All right, hold on a minute. Is there anything else for Heidi?
Right.
Okay, Heidi, thank you very much for your presentation.
That's what I said.
There's no reason to have you stand up there while uh council uh discusses this. Go ahead, Counsel Norris.
Thank you, Heidi. I, Heidi, sorry. I I understand what we're trying to achieve. I'm questioning how we get there. Because what I don't want to do is, and I'm I'm using the very loose term, so please, I'm not insulting anyone. Haphazardly on a plan that is done somewhere else that comes to council that says, here's a description of three projects, approve it. And then two weeks from now, here's another four projects, let's approve it. What I would really like to see is what is the plan over the next three years to spend X number of dollars? Because I will dare say, I would rather spend twenty six thousand dollars on something that we can agree is greatly impactful than adding twenty six thousand dollars to our operating budget, no offense, Heidi, to doing what we want to do with runoff. So I I I and I I say that loosely and I'm not trying to be um um spiteful, I guess, is a i- i- is a word. But I'm trying to say, what is the plan? So if we can get to a situation where here are fifteen things, five things, ten things, whatever, that equals two million dollars, you guys as council, listening to the mayor and town staff are top priorities. What we can come up with with spending this funding instead of six months from now hearing from a resident or whoever that we need to drop twenty five thousand dollars on something and we're like, sorry, we're out of money. So I I I guess I'm trying to wrap my hands around a plan. Uh, I think you guys know me. Let's look down the road. Let's look at a plan. I I think the mayor is a great advocate of looking down the road and working with a plan. I'm just a little leery that we're 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 coming where every two weeks we have a fifty thousand dollar project that we're trying to approve through the American Rescue Fund. If it's something else, let's go for it. But the American Rescue Fund, I I I I just think we need a plan. We need a plan.
Do you want to go take first shot at this? You want me to?
If there is a plan and we're not getting it, that's a whole nother story.
Let me tell you, let me tell you, let me, let me answer your question directly. I'm not going to give you a plan right now. I don't have it. Because if you were to say, I need to spend two point three million dollars, I don't have it, two point six. I don't have the plan. What we're trying to do is we're shaking the trees to find things that are eligible and things that we have and things that apply. There are social programs that exist now that I, every social program that I'm going to bring to you already exists. And so if your argument is, I don't want to give them extra money because they already have funds, then you're not going to approve it. Because these places already have funds that are looking to expand some things that they want to do. For example, um, uh, Sector is looking to expand, the Cultural Coalition is looking to expand some things they're going to do. And they're looking to expand in the city of Groton. But if it is additional funds for a finite period of time and that's it, and then it runs out. Because I'm not looking to bring and to establish new programs that need care and feeding five and ten years from now. Now, that doesn't mean that that may not end up happening in some case. For example, I, we talked to you guys, I think it was last week, about what we want to do with a tutoring program for the kids, right? If the, if the, the, we are working with the Board of Ed, but if the Board of Ed doesn't pay for that with ARPA funds, I'm going to come to you and ask you to come to do that for ARPA funds. But I can't say I want to do it right now because I'm trying to use somebody. But I can't say I wanna do it right now because I'm trying to use somebody else's ARPA funds before I come to you. Now, I could, we could make this really easy. Ron and I've had this discussion. I could say I wanna spend all my money on sewer and it's done. I could spend every single penny on sewer and still need more money. Because when you get into large infrastructure projects, it eats up money very quickly. I am concerned about doing that. Again, I don't wanna use this as found money. The sewer project, the sewer, uh, enterprise account is indeed an enterprise account. I pulled it out of the tax base on purpose so that it could have money and have bonding and grants and those kind of things. So, you know, part of me is that that account needs to stand on its own and they need to get the money and we need to plan for those kind of things. If there are small things, for example, with the MS four, that is an ever-changing. Uh, ever-changing program in that the state is changing. I mean, they're adding more and more requirements every year. And so that's why I reached out to Heidi, because we, cause I know that 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 happens. Or that we have projects in there. So if you're saying, okay, I need you to come to me one time. And here's all the list of projects, we're not gonna spend any money, because I don't know that I'm gonna get there in time. Wha- what I'm trying to do is if I get input from council, what is it you wanna, what is it that you as council? And your input from the citizens think we should spend the money on? Now typically, the response is gonna be, wait a minute, that's your job. You need to go figure it out and you need to bring it to me. And then we'll we'll vote yes or no on the thing. We are in the prog- in the progress now of identifying projects. And we're doing the best that we can with the guidelines that we ha- we have. So I I hear, I do, I hear what you say, what you're looking for. But if you're asking me, can you tell me right now what we're gonna spend the money on? Nope, don't know. Um, we are building that list right now. That's.
So Mayor, if I can, with all due respect, Honorable Mayor. I'm taking exactly what you said, for example, with Board of Education. So we're nitpicking at our dollars right now. And then Board of Education may say, we're not doing it. But then you're gonna come to council and say, well, let's do this. That's my point is, is there a conversation to be had? With these establishments and other organizations and agencies and also within ourselves to one have a dialogue. And I I'm sorry, I can't speak for other council members when they talk, they may say, yes, it is yours. I wanna be part of the process. I wanna be part of the conversation, not the decision. So my thing is, if we can have those conversations. Where we can develop a plan that says, look, Board of Ed is not doing this, so you guys have a decision to make. Are you gonna pay ninety five thousand dollars to do one, two, and three? Or twenty six thousand for that, forty thousand for that, but okay, wait a minute, you just spent it three weeks ago. So all I'm asking is, and I know. Most of municipalities have no clue what they're doing with this money. Many of them are still having conversations, many of them are still gathering survey results from their constituents. On what to do with this money. All I'm saying is, can we please have a conversation? What's the plan? Cause until we determine what that plan is. What the facets are within that conversation dynamics. It makes it very easy to make conversations now. But difficult to make the conversations six months from here now or even a year from now. That tha- tha- that's, I'm not, I have nothing against these. These are really good impactful, meaningful projects. I'm just saying, can we package it? Can can we say these are our two million? It doesn't need to be done now. It 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 can literally, like, there is, unless I'm wrong. But from everything I've read, we do not need to spend money now or make a decision now. In matter of fact, we don't need to make a decision or spend money for another thirteen months. So all I'm saying is, can we just package it? And I don't know if this is the format to even have that conversation.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot.
I understand what Councilor Norris is saying, but. From my perspective, we have a lot of projects that we put on the shelf because we don't wanna increase taxes or it's not. The highest priority, like that's not a, the rain garden isn't the most vital thing ever to do, so we've put it on a shelf. But it will benefit our residents, so it's a thing that we would like to do. I personally don't want to keep waiting on projects when we have money in the bank that is intended for those projects if. We can have a document that shows us, this is where we're at. You know, we do the same thing with the charitable donations. Every year we have a bank of money that we can donate to charity for some- something that impacts our community. And every time that they come to us with a donation request, I ask the finance director, how much have we spent? How much do we have left? What have we spent it on? That kind of thing. And I think to wait. Until the very end also puts all of our departments in a tough spot to do it all at the same time. And I don't know that that is necessarily going to have a better outcome than doing it the way we're doing it. Because it's not, it's not like there's no plan. It's that, for example, the rain garden project, that's already been planned because it's been in the works. So she's got that on on the ready. We're already ready to do it. Whereas other projects that are eligible for these funds, it might take ten months to plan them. So are we gonna make this project wait ten months because some other department's projects are taking forever? I don't know that that is the best decision for our residents to do that, to delay some projects. Because other projects take longer to plan.
Here's my answer to that. Have we started to have a conversation on what the mayor said? We don't know what Board of Education is doing. Do we want to have a psychologist work within Public Works? Do we wanna provide behavioral therapists that can work within Parks and Recreation throughout the summer activities? Do we want to have a therapist that works specifically? In the city of Groton that goes out and develops community outreach? I don't know. All I'm saying is, how are we approving all these other things? If we don't know if those other things are even in the works? I don't know, and I don't want to know, what directive has been given to staff members? Hey, we got two million dollars. What is the impact? How much and where do we go? But at the same time, is the thought process being deep enough? Where the maximum input, the maximum impact of our dollars. Through, I'm only speaking of the American Rescue Plan Act is felt. That's all I'm saying. No one has asked me, hey, what do you think we should be doing with the American Rescue Plan? Not to say anyone should, but I'm also saying is, we are not part of the process.
Counselor Carter?
Yeah, I I I underst- I I understand what you're saying. I I I get all ins of it. And on specifically, specifically with, um, what, uh. Deputy Mayor Depot that stated with the, um, the example of the awards. And that kind of meshes with what you were saying as a, you know, this is what we don't wanna do is just award people, you know, or organizations. Um, I also think that one of the things we run into. With that method is that we do have organizations at the end where we run out of money. We don't have to, we we don't have any funds there to to provide to them. I think that one way that we could possibly do the, we we possibly could do this is rather than. Bringing it to a vote and wasting time, um, you know, the possible projects that each department has or. Or any organization that that comes to us, um, use it as a an informational of what. What we could do with the money. This is what we, this is what I propose, right? And that shouldn't take long to do, ten, fifteen minutes, propose this, put it on the table. You know, and this is the estimated cost of what it would be. Um, if you decide that, we will come back at another date to request these funds, you know? Um, but at least we're getting the information and we're not shutting the door on people and making a decision right now, you know? Um, and when I say right now, I mean at the cow, you know, I I I don't, I don't see why we can't make those would-be projects as like a. Informational thing as opposed to holding it to a vote that night. That's it.
Counselor Sheffield?
Ron, Mayor and myself, the three of us, we have done this before as far as the bond funding. When we met at a separate meeting to, uh, discuss a large amount of money. That was to be spent and we sat down all the council members together. To have a plan to allocate which projects were most important. And we could do this with this rescue plan here if we so desire. I would, so I think Councilor Norris is correct. We should have something set up. To where we have a group of projects that we might may wanna do. Get together, see what's the most important ones and see how we can divvy out. You know, what the city's needs. Uh, we have, we said thirteen months, is that roughly we have to use the money or?
Yeah, we have, we have four years total. To to expend the funds.
Okay, so that gives us time.
It does, it works.
So, uh, but if there is things in the pipeline that we can do, that we should get together and gather and. Uh, see what we can use the money for and we can do that collectively. And then we're all on the same page. And then we know what we wanna do and then we bring it before the count, before, you know, our commi- committee of the whole. And, uh, take it from there, so. It's pretty easy to get going, but if we all have to get together and do it.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
So maybe there's some sort of like middle ground thing we could do, maybe set a deadline. For projects and, uh, Councilor Norris mentioned, there are communities doing surveys of their residents, of what projects they're interested in doing. The the thing that I'm hesitant about is, th- this is just a good example because it's. An older project and it's relatively simple. But like the rain garden project, do we want that to wait four years to get done? I I'm hesitant to make all of our projects wait for the whole ti- that's how long you have to expend the money, so I'm hesitant.
All right.
No, no, but if.
Here's, I'm sorry, please, you have the floor.
But what I'm saying is if we wait until, you know, whatever date we pick, I'm not saying we wait that long, but I'm saying if we want to pick a date. And say, okay, we want all of our projects, our proposals by this date. So say we as a council say, we don't want it to take any more than six months or something. Maybe that's kind of the compromise to say, okay, this can be the deadline for when we want all the proposals. Or whatever, and and if we don't want them piecemeal. My my main, um, concern is. If there are projects that are kind of common sense that we're definitely going to approve. I am hesitant to make those wait because we want to see the other proposals also. Does that make sense?
Go ahead.
So I think what I'm hearing has a consensus from the group. I know we've kind of gone all over. Is that, so let's take it one step at a time. When we have outside agencies like we had tonight to come in, are those okay to bring to you as we get the request for those? Meaning the ledge lights and those types of requests from the, from an an outside organization. The other piece of it, the second piece being internal projects. Which it sounds like I'm hearing would be to almost do a couple of facings where we have a deadline internally that we set and. I'm just gonna throw a date out there. By January first, we have all of our internal projects that we deem important. And then bring them to council as a whole. And present them and kind of get input at that point, not so much a vote, but just for input. And then move it forward in different phases and then have the next phase for March of something for those projects. I I'm just trying to help coordinate what I'm hearing with kind of a couple of different scenarios.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
I think doing something like that would also enable us to promote community participation. So we could say, this is the date we're gonna be presenting all of these projects. Please come and give your input or email before this date or, you know, come to a meeting before this date and give us your input. And maybe do, you know, an overview or a quick explanation. Because I, so. I feel like when we do community surveys, we don't always get a lot of response, but. People who want to pay attention and want to respond will. So I think we put it out there to the community if we do do something like that with a deadline where this is when we're gonna be presented with all these things. This is when, you know, if you wanna come give feedback, I do think that's valuable. I always wish we had more feedback from the community of like what projects they would like to see. Or, you know, if we do it in advance enough, we could say, are there projects on this list that you know of that you would like to see and we could, it would give us time. To, um, I don't know, just have a little more perspective than just the six of us on the council.
Okay, so. As luck would have it, we have a fifth Monday, which is next week. I had already planned on having a special committee of the whole. To talk about what your, meaning you as a council, what your goals and. Uh, projects are for the rest of this term. So what I would like to do, if you want to continue this conversation, since it is a special meeting, you can only discuss what's on the agenda. Add another item to talk about the ARPA projects and our, uh. What your expectations are for that. Is that something that you guys wanna have on there or just the one about your goals? What what is the, what's the will of the council? At this point, I'm not sure where you wanna go. Counselor Norris.
I I would say there are two separate issues that can be handled at the same time. The point I'm I I'm trying to make is, and I'm not an engineer. But we got a lot, a lot of engineers in Groton. Nothing is done successfully without a plan. So I just think we need a plan on how we deal with the American Rescue Plan. I think there's no guarantee that we ask for citizen input. That we're gonna get anything or anything we can work with or anything we deem meaningful. But as long as we challenge ourselves, our constituents, and in particular, our staff. To be innovative, responsive, seek partnerships. And have unwavering passion and be able to communicate. We can very easily put together a plan that is successful as for the city. In dealing with the American Rescue Fund funds. That's all I'm asking. And then along with that, in dealing with council goals, which are very short term. Council goals are a year, well, now we're a year and a half at max. That can happen at the same time. But I I I just, to my core, I I just really look at what's the plan. And I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, so my question, Counselor Piazza.
Just wanted to say, I think, uh, with, I think everybody's opinion here and what they're addressing is, it can all be collaborate together. I I'm I'm thankful for those who are seasoned. I I really am thankful for the directors and everybody that's within those departments. Uh, that we need to per- trust and, uh. I don't wanna say, that's that's kind of like what I geared toward is that they're bringing their expertise to us, you know, cause we're not engineers, we're not. You know, healthcare professionals. I mean, I can say I am, but all, everything that ledge light is doing is not everything I know. So, I mean, I think that's important. So basically, I wanted to say is I think, I think everything that everybody's saying can be collaborated together. I think it's a good idea. I think what, um, Deputy Mayor Dep- uh, Depot is saying is that, you know. To come up with everything that we can see something face. I do think that there will be times that somebody may come to us and we don't have the monies. Because I think everybody who's had a budget sometimes has been in a position where they say, well, we're sorry, we don't have the monies. Um, but hopefully that we're gonna move forward and make a plan and that we will be able to, uh, spend these monies accordingly. I do think some of these plans need to move forward faster than others. I do agree with that. So, um, hopefully we can move forward. So um, hopefully we can move forward and plan together and uh, do this best way we can. I, I think uh, constituently, I think to get people more involved, I, I, I'm, I'm thinking back to Ledge Light where they had one representative brought four hundred people and a large part of that is because this person built relationships with these people, so. Sending surveys, uh, we've done it in healthcare fields multiple times, we've done Survey Monkey, we've done all kinds of things, but the best way usually is uh, in person, so I think that's something I'd like to see is that we can uh, in person, reach out to our constituents. Um, that seems to be an issue more uh, in the technology field, people like to see more face to face and how we could do that, that would be a nice plan to do, so we could win, you know, get four hundred people involved, that would be amazing.
Okay, so my question to the council, on the three things that were presented tonight, Ledge Light Health District, Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments and Rain Gardens, is the council ready to move forward with a vote on the mayor and council meeting of nine, six, twenty-one, or do you need additional information? If you need additional information, I'd like to know, and I will not move it forward to that meeting. If you are prepared to take a vote, then I will move these forward or any of these forward to the, to the next meeting. And I, you can get me that breakdown, right? So we'll get that to you before the, before the meeting. And then at that meeting, if you are not prepared to vote on that, instead of voting something down because it was brought up, we should table it? That's not true, wrong term. We should move it to a future meeting so that you get the, you get enough information so that you can make uh, an informed decision. That's important to me uh, for the council. So my question is, are you ready to move, so let's go one at a time. Ledge Light Health District, are you guys ready to move that?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'll take that.
Well, let, let me back over a second. I am not in favor and I would probably vote no to the Ledge Light Health District.
Okay, but you're, you are ready to move forward, do you need additional information in which to? Counselor Carter?
I, I don't want to, so I, I probably should have asked this question to him. Um, it was like the whole one percent thing, the one percent that he was requesting. Would they accept anything less? That'd be another question, like these people that are presenting this stuff, would they accept anything at a lesser amount? Um, I, so I, I, I probably should have asked that, you know, I think with the Ledge Light thing.
I can reach out to uh, Steve Mansfield.
But, 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 but I would, I would move on the Ledge Light now, I would. But I, I was, I probably should have asked.
Understand. I, I am, alright, let me be clear in what I'm asking. I'm not asking me, I'm not asking you to give me your vote tonight on yes or no. Now, again, like I said, if we move this forward, I'm trying to move it forward with the anticipation that it's probably gonna get an affirmative vote. Now, if that means individuals decide not to vote on it, that's one thing, but here's my concern, I have moved things forward before to you, to this council and you have voted it down. So what I'm trying to learn from that is to make sure that I have the information to you, enough information, so that you can make an informed decision because I'm not in the habit of bringing bad motions to the council. And I do not intend to start that this term. So, again, my question, so let me ask it this, you know what, here's what we'll do. I need a motion to move the Ledge Light Health District to the mayor and council meeting of nine, six.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, you're opposed. You're opposed to moving it forward?
Yes.
Okay.
That's Labor Day, are we meeting on Labor Day?
Uh, hold on. I did say nine, six, sorry, nine, seven. You're right, nine, seven, my apologies. Aye. So you're opposed to move it, do you need additional information in order to, in order to move it?
No, I do not.
Okay, then the motion carries, we will move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine, seven. So for the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine, seven.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. For the Rain Gardens, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine, seven, uh, twenty-one.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
I, I, I was gonna say, do, do you, sorry. I, I think seeing that falls into the, our government, our city government, I think we should, I don't, is a better word, table it or just figure out what we're gonna do when it comes to?
Well, it's just fully not to move it, I guess.
Oh, just don't move it, okay, okay.
If you don't want to move it, then we'll not move it and then I'll just, you know. So you guys want to talk about this again separately? Is that what I'm getting from the council? Because in that case, I'm gonna need to go back and get this motion rescinded, not rescinded, get the maker of the motion to take it off the table and the seconder of the motion to take it off and we'll move it to another mayor and council meeting when you're ready. Or excuse me, move it to a another committee of the whole meeting to further discuss it and then talk about moving it.
That's better, I think.
Alright, so let's go back, who was the maker of the motion?
Me.
Okay, are you willing to take it off the table for moving it? And the seconder?
Yes.
Okay, so it's off the table now, so the first two will, will go, the Rain Gardens, you want to talk about that again at another committee of the whole?
And she'll have the breakdown.
Yep. Well, she will, I will get the breakdown before this next meeting, but we'll move it, we will take it to another Cal, committee of the whole and we'll discuss it and it can be a part of the larger department internal. So the, so we'll break them into external and internal, so we'll, we'll bring all the internals together, if that makes council a little more comfortable. Okay? Anything else on this line item? Okay, thank you, moving on, we'll go to seven, seventy-three Parks and Rec Port in Place at Washington Park. Mary? Oh, hold on. And then Sierra, you want to go next on that? Okay, I didn't, o- okay. This is the Port in Place, Mary?
Correct, good evening. Um, so I come to you tonight uh, from, I mean, let's do some history. Uh, back during the budget season, I had budgeted or started to budget for light replacements at Washington Park. As you guys are all aware, Groton Utilities has stepped up and helped us with that project, so the eighty thousand dollars we initially allocated for lights is now being transferred in my budget to allocate for a new port in place uh, ground covering at the two playscapes up at Washington Park. The port in place um, ground covering is similar to what, is exactly what we have at the beach, the blue squishy kind of matting underneath the playscape at the beach. We've gotten a quote, um, the quote is eighty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is um, well, forty-six, that, forty-six hundred, twenty-five dollars over what is the eighty thousand, but I do have that amount in my operating budget for miscellaneous repairs and for wood mat, which is the wood chips that we used to put under the, so I kind of have the monies to uh, move forward with this project. Um, I got the quote from the company that did the port in place at the beach, which is on the state contract and the state bid uh, process, um, so I bring forth to you this to move forward so we can get that done before the winter and the kids can um, enjoy a safe environment at Washington Park.
And these will be for both the uh, playscapes that we have in Washington Park?
Five to ten and then we have a toddler, to- toddler, playscape, a smaller one for, you know, five and under.
Right, Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just want to say that I've gotten great feedback about the one at the beach and so I'm really excited that we're doing this because I think a lot of families, I mean, if I had a kid, this would make me feel better about letting my kid play on the playscape, so um, thank you for doing, moving it to the other park too, because I think it, it's a good improvement.
Absolutely, I, I have gotten a lot of feedback and the kids like it because it's bouncy. I like it because it's energy absorbing. Uh, but I do think we're gonna get increased ridership, my term, not anybody else's, up here once those playscapes, uh, once we get the port in place because they'll be much more fun for the kids and I think we're gonna see much more activity in the park as a result of this. Open the floor, Counselor Norris.
I'm sorry. So wait a minute, is, so this is part of a CIP?
Yes.
Okay, and you have, you said a couple of bucks in your operating?
I have eighty thousand dollars was put in my CIP for lights.
Yes.
Um, so it, when, but the budget process had already started and it was already approved for the lights, but we're reallocating it for the playscape, uh, for the ground covering, of which we got a quote initially for eighty-nine thousand dollars and change and I said, I only have eighty thousand, so we got it down to where I have operating do- dollars in my maintenance budget that can offset the extra five thousand dollars.
So what's getting done if you don't use that five thousand in your operating?
Well, it's budgeted for miscellaneous repairs for playgrounds and for wood mat, the wood chip, the, that, that.
Okay, now I get what you're saying.
That's already a line item under park improvement.
Yeah, so instead of buying wood chips, you're gonna put it to it.
Yes, we'll, we'll add it to this and we won't have to buy the wood chips every year because this is a permanent, permanent um, surfacing.
Small thinking as hell, alright, thank you.
So when, when we identified that the lights was gonna be done with regi funds, I asked Mary to take a look at using the eighty thousand dollars to do the port in place because it was so successful at the beach and she's been able to, to get through that and that's what she's bringing to the council now.
I will, I will apologize for running out, um, because the light project that we uh, got approved is actually started today. So they're out there taking pictures of what the old light, what it looks like lit up with the old lights with a drone and everything else and they'll give us pictures of when it looks, when it's all the new lights are on, but they did start that project today and they'll have their field one done by the end of the week.
And the, the last pole that's gonna be done is the one with the Osprey nest, we've already, we've worked with DEP, we've worked with our guys to make sure that we're not dislocating, you know, anyone and they're looking to build, uh, I think the last plan that I saw was to build the nest higher than the lights on top of the lights so that the Ospreys will come back in that location, so.
Are they gonna build the nest or they actually take the nest and move it to the?
They're gonna take the nest and move it, which is uh, the preferred method. Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Uh, Counselor Piazza?
I just wanted to ask, instead of the beach, I just wanted to know statistically, do we find that this kind of surface is, decreases injury when children fall compared to woodchips?
Correct, yes it does. Yes, because which, and which if you have to replace every year, you gotta rebuild that cushion uh, of depth, this is already built in when they pour it in, pour it in places.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Hey, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine, seven, twenty-one?
So moved.
Motion in a second, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to move the schedule around, we're gonna go seven, ninety-four Economic Development Grant. Sierra, are you, are you prepared for this? Okay, uh, Megan, I apologize, I'm moving this around because we have somebody else here, I did not know was gonna be here, so. Alright, uh, Sierra, you have the floor.
Okay, good evening everyone, I'm Sierra Patrick, the Economic Development Specialist for um, the City of Groton. So back in June, um, this council approved an Economic Development Grant Program that allows eligible um, grants for business soft cost and minor facade improvements. So today, I'm actually really proud to bring forth a recommendation from the Economic Development Commission to award um, Gino Properties um, a thousand dollars for the business soft cost grant portion and I have Priscilla here um, with me today, just to give a little bit of background about her experience of opening up a business in the City of Groton as well as with the grant program.
If you're comfortable and you're distant enough, you can remove your mask so we can hear you if you're okay with it.
Yeah, I'd prefer to keep it because I'm not in the clear with the vaccination yet.
Okay, understand. Thank you.
So yeah, thank you everyone for staying so late and for giving me the chance to talk. Um, so as Sierra said, uh, we have been in the process with the zoning um, committee uh, about opening a new uh, type of business, uh, which is located in one fifty Bridge Street. Um, during this process, we have uh, become aware of how important um, that um, that area is for the development of the city and how uh, there are already, there is already a vision in place. So we have tried to conform to that vision in the sense of the use of the property. Um, so it's gonna be an automotive, um, so it's gonna be a cosmetic use of ceramic co- sorry, ceramic coating and paint production film. It's a luxury service and hopefully we're gonna be able to attract um, high-end vehicles and we're gonna use a portion, especially the storefront, um, as a uh, display for, for uh, nice vehicles and also our services. Um, so the, as I mentioned, we started working with the uh, City of Groton about, I would say more than a year ago now in uh, last July. It has definitely been a long uh, process, we were just able to get the approval, uh, I believe, yeah, a few weeks ago. Um, so I would say definitely we had to go through, as a small business, uh, it might be a lot and we definitely are resilient and we are very committed and very passionate about what we're doing. Um, but as you could see also from the small business scenery in Groton City, it, it's very tough um, for a small business to go through all these steps and also um, make such a huge investment. So it would be, I'm not really familiar with like the works of the council or of the city. The first time that uh, we've learned about this is when we had to go through uh, the um, planning and, yeah. Uh, so we had to go through a text amendment, which I understand it's all requirements, we have to um, abide by the requirements. But I think it would be really great and of course, I'm really appreciative of uh, this small uh, soft grant that Sierra has pointed out to us. We haven't really looked into other um, opportunities, we're definitely investing a lot. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with the property in one fifty Bridge Street, it used to be the old um, map up, yeah. Um, so it's been built around, I think, less than a century ago, but around nineteen thirties. Um, it was since then, I don't think there's been any real investment to uh, to maintain it. So we did encounter um, a lot of difficulties in uh, bringing back to life such a lighted building. Um, there were also some structural issues, for example, um, we had to build a brand new uh, parking lot, we had to put compact um, soil because there was, so the soil that was previously there was not suitable and the parking lot was already um, sinking, so it was not safe to say the least and because of that also, the building was uh, kind of sinking and there was like a hole in the middle of the parking lot, so um, there was a risk that also the dirt from the road would go in that direction because that is the direction of the water. Um, hopefully, uh, the engineers are sure as that's not the case. We did dig very close to the uh, to the sidewalk and we filled all that area with uh, as I said, compact dirt and built um, a concrete wall, which I think it's like four feet uh, underground, so it's very stable, um, it's very safe and obviously went overboard because we wanted to make sure we don't have to deal with that again, but also that it's safe for um, you know, the street and the sidewalk. Um, and then for the facade, where as you know, it's a build, uh, it's a brick building, it was painted, you know, with the color blue, light blue and dark blue. We really are working, I don't know if you've seen, we started work, working with removing the paint and just exposing the, the old brick, uh, which we think is gonna be really nice, bring like a unique character and, and basically the, the old character of the building and just bring it back. So yeah, so I'm really grateful for uh, this soft grant for helping us with the costs we incurred uh, through the zoning process and uh, I haven't looked into a lot of opportunities, uh, other opportunities, but if there is anything, um, I heard Sierra mentioned for the facade um, grant, so I'd be really thankful if you could bring anything uh, forward to us and see if we could apply for that. Yeah, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, and just to um, provide you guys some back, um, a little bit more background, this applicant is um, the business soft cross that we are doing a reimbursement back for is for the zone, um, the expense that they had, the business had to incur for a lawyer to actually do the text amendment change from um, an auto retail to an auto paint protective um, process and I believe- And I believe they spent roughly over two thousand dollars, um, for the attorney to come in and walk them through that, that process. And that was an unexpected cost on a, a small business at, at that time.
And has this went through EDC for approval?
Yes, so the EDC has reviewed the application, um, they've discussed it and asked me to bring forth, um, a recommendation to this council to consider it. We, um, do have one contingency that, um, we just have to go through and make sure all of the eligibility, um, eligibility's are current for, that are under the grant.
Okay, so your request tonight is for the council to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine, seven?
Yes.
For approval?
Or, and maybe a few, maybe a future, um, mayor.
Well, but right now, your specific request is for this soft cost grant for a thousand dollars for the council's approval since it's gone through EDC?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Questions or comments, Councilor Carter?
Can I ask you a question? Um, I'm glad you guys are, I'm glad you guys are bringing business to the city. That's good. Um, I have a couple of questions. If, if you knew it would have been this much work, would you have brought your business to the city?
That's a good question, that's what we see.
Honest, honest.
Honest, yeah, honestly, we, we doubt it. I wouldn't say we wouldn't, but we doubt, if we knew, um, everything would have to go through. I have to correct Sierra, I think I provided her with, uh, just one of the bills, but it's been over twenty-two and just for lawyers.
So yeah, so I, I, I caught, yeah, so I caught that and I, I was trying to think, I don't know if what you were hitting that as well, but, um, was it difficult to work with the city as far as, um, pertaining your, you know, your permits and building code? To get to that whole process was, would you say it's, it's, it's been difficult? And if so, is, is it been on the city's end and how could we change that for you?
So.
Or how could the city change that rather?
So I, I shouldn't say, I, I don't wanna say that it's been, um, uh, dread. It's been going according to the rules that are already in place. It, it, but it's taking as long as it could take, not longer, um, basically. So yeah, tho- those are, that, that is the process in place. We, because initially we, uh, we don't have such a, um, high use, so this business is very niche. So we didn't think we would have to, um, have so many requirements, but, um, that, that's what our lawyers went us towards and what, um, the, the committee was, uh, okay with, so, yeah.
Okay, alright.
So the issues are not, I, I wanna try to clarify for my purposes because this falls underneath me. So the issues were not with personalities or people not helping you or getting along, it's the process that you have to go through in order to get this type of business approved? Is that accurate? Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Any oth- any other questions or comments on this, Councilor Norris?
Thank you, you've been through it. You're here, we thank you. And now you're a world of knowledge to help other businesses coming to the city, so I, I appreciate that. Thank you for applying also for the grant and, and, um, receiving it. I wanted to ask Sierra real quick, do we have any other applicants in the pipeline for this particular grant?
We don't have any submitted applications, but we do have a few interested parties.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Sheffield?
Uh, Sierra, uh, now this is part of, of the Tiff district, correct?
One fifty Bridge Street is part of the Tiff district.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hey, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine, seven, twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, what's the number three? Alright, three ninety-two, review of city of Groton non-union handbooks, change in pension, change in pension contributions. Linda?
Okay, I'm here to, um, bring these changes to council as they're part of our handbook. And as most of you know, whenever there's a change of the handbook, I have to bring it to the council. There was a decision that was made this year to increase the contributions for three components that, um, make part of the non-union employees here. And, um, this is broken up into three different areas because of when the, s- the specific handbooks were, were written or amended. So, um, the first one is, uh, we, we want to, 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 uh, increase the percentages so that, we hadn't done these in many years. And we are the lowest contributors to our pension plan now, so we thought it, uh, might be a good time to raise these. We haven't done it in a long time and during the negotiations this year, most of our unions did increase theirs also. So for the first one, um, and these are all gonna be effective October first, twenty twenty-one, with the employees, um, that were hired prior to eleven, two thousand eight, their current contribution is five point two percent and we're going to increase that by point three percent for the next three years. With the employees that, um, that were hired after eleven, one, two thousand eight, their current contribution is five point five percent. Again, we're gonna do a three, a point three percent increase, um, through the next three years through two thousand twenty-four. And the last is the management handbook, non-union management handbook, and that current rate is five point two percent. We are adding point four percent each year through two thousand twenty-four.
Councilor Norris, you have a question? Well, you look like you have a question, I'm sure you're gonna have a question.
You gotta pick one, I guess.
I, I, I apologize for my lack of doing homework. So this contribution, the five point two, for example, in the sur- five point two to six one, that is the employee or employer?
Employee contribution.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor?
The employee e- contribution remains the same?
The employee e-?
Yes.
That's the one that's increasing.
The employee contribution is increasing.
Oh, I'm sorry, so the employer contribution is the same?
Well, it's not a contribution.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna go down a little bit because it adds up to a hundred percent.
Yes.
Right, so if the employee.
Right, so I'm trying to hear, yes, ours is rema- yeah.
Well.
So ours is not going up, it's gonna go down.
I would think that Mr. Uhas would be the one that would be able to answer that.
Ron? Nevermind, go ahead.
In theory, with the employee paying more, a higher percentage, in theory would relieve the city's portion, in a perfect world, everything being equivalent. However, the city's portion is based on the actual evaluation and the actual determined contribution amount. So i- if we change assumptions in our valuation report, which one of the things that we've been doing the last few years is bringing down our, um, rate of return. All ci- cities and municipalities across the board have used a high rate of return from their investments. We're not earning those returns, so we've been dropping them down. So you see, you've seen an increase in the city contribution based on change in valuation, assumptions with the Val report. So in, in a perfect world, everything being equal, it will decrease the city's contribution, although there's a lot of other factors that play into it where it may, you may not see it next budget season, there still may be a potential increase.
Right, so potentially the percentage is gonna go down, but the dollar value may change.
Right, so if you're looking at percentage, if one, one part of the percentage goes up, the other part's gonna go down. Now, the percentage is really not what's important. What's important is what is the true dollars that are gonna be paid? So as this changes based on actuarial amounts, our true amount, the, the our, the employer true amount may go up, but the percentage of the employees, we're asking the employees to pay more, uh, towards, uh, that pension.
Right, I, I'm sorry.
Is that what you were trying to get?
Yes, but I, but I think the explanation the three of you gave is very valuable information to the residents of the city, so they'll understand also, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Councilor Sheffield, you had a, you have the floor.
Just, I guess, for the resolution itself, because each, uh, three, uh, contracts say city is increasing employee contribution to the pension plan. I figured, uh, just to include, you know, making sure, um, nu employee hired prior to and, you know, in the, in the effective part, so nobody's confused of which one is which, I guess.
Did, you, you wanted me to identify which ones?
Yeah, and after effective, uh, you know, city is increasing the employee.
In the statement.
What's that?
In the statement, you'd like me to.
And the whereas?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what is it you're looking for?
Yeah, just to see, to state each one, you know, nu employee hired prior to and then hired after, you know,
Well, we have, well, we have that in the whereas, is that not what we have there?
It is there, but I think we're just asking, is that we put in the statement?
It does, it says whereas and then it has this table, so what is it you're looking for?
No, what I'm saying here, the effective is increasing employee contribution to the pension plan, but it doesn't specify the nu hired prior to, in between there.
So you want that up here and not just in the table?
Exactly.
I can do that.
Fine, we can, we can make that correct. Or that change.
And, and ma- mayor, it should be in the resolution itself, which, which handbooks that you're referring to? Because that is the, the legal reading.
Right, because there are two different handbooks that we're looking to change. One is the management handbook.
Three different handbooks.
Or three different handbooks, sorry, the one before two, uh, before two thousand eight, the one after two thousand eight for the non-union and then the manager's handbook. Thank you. Is that, that's correct, right?
Yeah, that's fine, I was just gonna ask Ron a question, I can ask him tomorrow.
Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hey, in that case, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine, seven, twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Alright, we're gonna go to six fifty-five, department presentations. The first one up is Fire Department, Chief Tompkins. And these are informational. Thank you.
Well, good evening, and I will try and be brief. And, uh, I apologize for the pictures, uh, you know, PowerPoint would have been better, but best laid plans, um, were ruined by Andre, so they're, Andre here. So we were very busy going through, leading up to the weekend and through the weekend, so, um, today, uh, just gonna explain quickly, um, about the Fire Department, who we are and what we do. But I'll, I'll tell you right from the beginning that I would invite any of you or all of you as a field trip, which I know is very hard to get everybody together, but anybody to visit the firehouses, reach out to me and I would, um, meet you and take you through, um, the firehouses and, and our equipment, meet some of our men. Much, much better idea of what we do if you, if you come and see than me standing up here and telling you. But, um, I did, uh, make a little package here of at least pictures of, um, the greatest, uh, you know, the large assets we have. So the first picture you're looking at is Company One, it's on Broad Street. We do have two stations. This is our headquarters station, it was built in nineteen sixty-six, but has recently been, um, upgraded. The upstairs living area and kitchen facilities for the firefighters, um, were upgraded. And this is where we are. If you remember, we're gonna pave this, uh, this station's parking lot and front ramp. If you, uh, turn the page, that's, uh, our frontline engine. It's a two thousand and nine Pierce fire, uh, engine. It's located at Company One, um, it's operated daily, um, out of that station. If you turn the next page, that's our reserve engine. It is housed currently at Company One. Uh, we do not run that engine anymore. We used to run two engines and a ladder truck, but, um, we currently are running one engine and a ladder truck operationally, uh, because it's more efficient with the manpower that we have. We used to be what they called the combination department. We had volunteers and paid personnel. We no longer have any volunteer personnel. There was two volunteer companies, the Pioneer Hose Company, which was out of, uh, headquarters, and the Eastern Point Volunteer Company out of Company Two. But, um, a sign of the times, uh, volunteerism is down and has been, uh, across the nation and certainly in the city of Groton, um, to the point where we have, we have no volunteers and have not for a couple of years now had any volunteers. So for staffing reasons, we staff an engine and a ladder, um, on a regular basis. And I'll get into that a little bit longer, a little bit farther down the line. But the reserve engine is housed at Company One. If you flip the page, um, we do have a twenty-foot boat that is trailered, obviously. It actually was a police boat. They, they got a grant years back, this was, uh, one of their boats. It was sitting, um, out back here years ago. Chief Delia went to the police chief and said, hey, well, how's it for you? If we can also, you know, kinda use it. So as you'll see, it says Fire Police. We do, uh, house it, we do respond with it, we do, uh, man it for part of the marine group. So we will be called by Coast Guard or local fire departments to go out and do search and rescue, to, uh, help, uh, boats that, we went, a week ago, two weeks ago, to a boat that hit the rocks just off Eastern Point Beach, the little island that's out there. It was nighttime, somebody hurt it, they called us, we went out. They were hung up on the rocks, thankfully they were okay, but they were, um, they did hit their prop and they, and they, we assisted them to get back to the dock at, uh, Bayberry Point, Bayberry Lane to, uh, to be able to pull their boat. So, uh, that is housed at Company One. And like I said, we do cross man that with the police sometimes, depending on what the call is. We will take it to one of the boat launches depending on where we're going and the police will meet us there and then one of their officers will get on the boat. So we do cross man with, with the police department, it works out very well. Filtered page there, that's the Eastern Point Station. And, uh, it was built in two thousand and five, I believe. I don't know off the top of my head, the exact date, but, uh, obviously it is the newer station. It houses, if you flip the page, our ladder truck, so one hundred-foot Pierce Tower Ladder. That also is a two thousand and nine. I show you our bigger assets. This truck right here in current dollars is about a million and a half to replace. And I say that because someday I'll be coming here to ask you for a million and a half dollars to replace that. We have been very, very, um, doing a good job on our capital fund in the budget. So hopefully when the time comes to replace some of these vehicles, we will have monies, uh, maybe not all of it, but, uh, a large chunk to be able to, to, uh, purchase.
So, so one of the things, uh, that we are doing here is we've identified asset life and we are putting aside money in a, it's not in a lockbox per se, but it is set aside in an account for the vehicles, for the larger purchases, for the trucks. I don't know if it was this council or the last council approved us to get the one truck that had the, the crack in the chassis and get that repaired. So in the process of doing that, so the good news is, we extended the life of that truck. The bad news is, the life of this truck and the life of that truck are within eighteen to twenty-four months of each other. So that is why we put a little more aside this year and, 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 so since I've been mayor, we've been putting more money aside so that we could offset the potential for monies that may be asked for later on. Now, there's no, you know, you don't know what future mayors and councils are gonna do, so they could end up spending that money. And then we end up having to come and somebody says, okay, we need bonds for two trucks. What I'm trying to do is to get, to do the fiscally responsible thing, get that money set aside, let that account build up and then we may only have to bond one truck and we'll be able to pay the other truck out of cash because we'll have that capital reserve established. So I just wanna let the council know, uh, what we're doing and what our plans are and why we're thinking that. I'm sorry, chief, please continue.
Uh, okay, if you flip the page to the last, uh, page there, that is a, a second, uh, small ten-foot Zodiac we have, which we would use, um, for very close inshore type. which we would use, um, for very close inshore type, uh, rescue or ice rescue type operations that the other boat wouldn't be able to get into, um, uh, because the draft, uh, on that boat. So, I just give you a quick picture of, of the bigger assets that we have. The one picture I don't have is the biggest asset we have, which is our, our firefighters. So, the department's made up of myself and a deputy chief, um, the, by charter, I am the fire, chief fire marshal, but most of the fire marshal work is done by the deputy chief, Ted Sargent. He does the inspections, the plan reviews, works very closely with the building department to take care of all those things. And then we have fifteen firefighters, three shifts of five, um, they work twenty-four hours on, forty-eight off, and that just contin- you know, rotates basically forever. Um, we do, contractually have a minimum manning of four firefighters, um, which reverts back to part of the, rather than, in the past, we had two engines and a ladder truck with a three-person minimum, so each paid driver, um, would take either the engine or the ladder or the engine, and then meet the volunteers at the scene. Again, we don't have any volunteers anymore, so for safety reasons, we run, um, out of headquarters, the engine, and we also have, uh, expedition, and then out of Company Two, we run the ladder truck and a pickup truck. So, if we have a medical call, which is seventy-five to eighty percent of our calls, we do approximately twelve hundred calls a year, um, so seventy-five to eighty percent of those are medical calls, we'll send one person from headquarters with the vehicle, one person from Company Two with the vehicle, to save wear and tear on the bigger, you know, more expensive trucks. And then if we get any type of call, that's a fire call, a rescue call, a motor vehicle accident, we will put two people on the ladder truck and two people on the engine, abandon the, the smaller vehicles, and then they drive, um, to the scene that way. So it's much safer in the bigger vehicles to have two people if you have to back, somebody can get out and help you and things like that. So that's the way we are operating right now and have been. If you remember, our, our reserve engine, uh, broke, and then our second engine had to be repaired, so we went down, um, and, and ran that way for a while, and it worked. Uh, and it's much safer, so, um, obviously, the, the guys, uh, appreciate it riding with two people on a truck. It's, uh, having driven alone for many years, it's, uh, it's a lot better to have somebody to bounce things off as you go, strategy-wise, uh, to the scene. So, um, we try and take care of the guys as much as possible, it's a very stressful job. I'm sure you read, you know, PSTD is something that is, um, not, never used to be talked about in the fire service, but we, um, it is, it was taboo, and it's not as much anymore, we have, uh, EAP systems, uh, or the city does, but we also have our own that is specific to police and fire, who understand police and fire issues, um, trying to make sure we keep our members as healthy as possible. So, that's, that's the quick overview of what we do, we do offer, obviously, any services, because we get called quite often for, you would be surprised what, because when you don't know who to call, they call and they send the Fire Department. But, uh, uh, bulk of our calls are emergency medical related, and then, uh, fire, it's at rescue, we do do trench rescue, we have uh, all kinds of rescue equipment that if you ever come, we can show you and, um, let you, uh, you know, kind of explore that. So, um, again, I invite you to come at any time, um, and, and take a tour of either or both stations, and talk to some of the guys, and see what we do. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Where are we on staffing?
Right now?
Yep.
Uh, we are, we have fifteen firefighters, we are at full staffing, um, we, one of our members is retiring, actually, at the end of the month. And today was his last day, and he left, you know, because he has some vacation time, he left at eight o'clock tonight, so, um, I did miss him walkout, but, um, so we, we do have an opening that we have already worked with HR, um, and the applications are coming in as we speak, and hopefully we can get somebody, um, up to fill that, that spot, but, again, there's always four people on. There are four firefighters, minimum, on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, contractually, and we fill it with overtime, you know, and order people in. There will always be at least four firefighters working, um, at a time.
But I want a council to know that we are hiring, so that we'll be a hundred percent staffed, uh, in a short period of time. And we anticipated this, and, and we've had the hiring process.
Yes.
So I just wanna make sure council understood that. Okay, questions for chief? Councilor Norris.
Chief, thank you very much. Do you have what you need?
Do I have what I need?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the mayor always asks, you know, I would, uh, you know, in the future, as, as we adapt to no volunteers, uh, it might, it might be a time in the future where, um, you know, I come, uh, before you, obviously through the mayor, for, uh, manpower, I would always like more manpower, um, and, and, uh, potentially some type of administrative, we have no administrative help. We're staffed twenty-four hours though, so as far as answering the phone, the firefighters answer the phone, they take messages and things like that. So, um, so it works, but, you know, we might get to the point where an administrative assistant of some type, you know, would, would be appropriate, um, in the future, but it, we're not the only people who, uh, do not have volunteers anymore, so the community as a whole, we do mutual aid, and they give us mutual aid. And we've grown into a system that works pretty good, where, you know, you can't, we can't do it all ourselves. When I first started and we had a fire, we didn't call anybody but the city of Groton, because we had enough volunteers and all, but that is not the norm for anybody, uh, around here. If they have a fire, pretty much every single department around here will call for help immediately from other departments.
The reason why I ask is, in terms of equipment, um, do you have what you need?
Yeah.
But that's a bigger nut, if you understand what I'm saying, and understanding, we no longer have volunteers to do the firefighting that you talk about, is fifteen personnel enough, and I'm glad to hear you say you're okay with that, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the chief? Okay, thanks chief, I appreciate it. All right, the next one is Public Works, Bill, I'll bring you up. This is Bill Robards, Bill Robards is our Public Works Director.
Good evening, all. Good evening, and I was gonna spend some time tonight to talk about the projects and everything that we're working on with Public Works and Facilities, okay? Uh, first thing that I was going to speak to is Mitchell Street, so we have a mill and repave coming up with that. The council recently approved the expenditure for that, uh, last week. And the progress now is going to be communications, so we'll be reaching out to TSA busing, uh, General Dynamics, Pfizer, and local police to, to coordinate for the traffic, right, for the work. Previously, we just completed the sidewalks, catch basin repairs, and, uh, some, some ADA compliant crosswalks in that area, so the street is complete as far as Public Works goes, now we're ready to bring in, uh, the contract was awarded to Pastriarx, we're ready to bring in Pastriarx to perform the work. We were hoping to get the work begun in September, we recently reached out to him and, and let him know that the contract went to him. Uh, so it appears now we're gonna be probably into the first week or second week of October, so we're a couple of weeks behind, but still on, on time to get it done for this season, okay? Uh, the duration of the work, I expect is gonna be a week to a week and a half to completion, and that's striping and everything, okay? Uh, second topic that I'd like to speak to is Paquonic Road, so that's the full depth reclamation, so what we mean by that is the, the road had reached, uh, a, a life expectancy where you can no longer mill and repave, so we need to go down, look through test pores, uh, determine the depth, and then we'll mill all of the asphalt and then the, the subbase into a brand-new product, uh, and then we'll fix all of that, we'll put a, uh, Portland cement cover on that and a couple layers of asphalt, so that will give you a good solid base, a brand-new street, uh, that's gonna last for quite some time. Included in the project will be some sidewalk replacement and also some stormwater piping, which is up towards the Five Corners. Now that particular project runs from the Five Corners all the way down to Rainbow, okay? Uh, that one is funded by Lot, Lotzip, uh, that one is also gonna require much communication of the customer, so we've had, uh, Buford's and a few of the other, uh, businesses reach out to us already, and really looking for a healthy, vibrant communication with them, with timelines and, and impact, and, you know, how can we help them stay afloat, and, and make sure that we can get the customers to their door and, and still keep their business up and going. So, uh, we'll have boots on the ground every day from Public Works during that project, and then we also have, uh, project, uh, man, uh, project management support coming in from Beta on that as well. So that duration, I'm expecting it to be about two months. I don't have a, a, a start date for that yet, uh, as the, as you can read here, we were waiting for approval from CHRO, we just recently got that, and then we just got approval from the state today. So, uh, coming up next, next steps for that will be to, um, affirmative action plan needs to be submitted by, uh, B, uh, B and, B and G for the work. Uh, we'll get the approval from the state to notice to proceed, and then they'll be coming to you for the approval for the funds, okay?
And we have, in preparation for this, we've organized this for a couple of years now, COVID put a, um, put a halt on this, due to the state, but we've reached out to the utilities to look at underground utilities, meaning water and sewer, uh, because this is some of the older, oldest part of the uh, utilities that we have, and we've been assured that there's nothing that needs to be replaced. So, hopefully, there's not gonna be any da- any issue or damage associated with the compaction, we're gonna go to a ninety, what, ninety-four, ninety-five percent compaction, I think, on this, so, uh, but we've already reached out to utilities, and they've said, nope, we're good to go, we should be okay on that. If anything happens during this, then we'll respond and we'll be coming back, utilities will come back to the, the utility commission, and then to the council if we have to react to that. So I just wanna make sure council is aware, uh, of that. Okay, Bill, please continue.
Thank you, um, on to, uh, sidewalks and catch basin repairs, so the, these are the things that we do, you know, day-to-day. You know, we have a team that does, uh, you know, heavy work equipment, light work equipment, we have a couple of guys, three people that work on this type of work all the time, so it's, it's really an input from the customer for, hey, I've got my sidewalk out in front, is, you know, it's settled, and I've got a tripping hazard, or it's cracked. Cutting new curb cuts, you know, for new homes, Baker Cove, for example, and things like that, so we're in the mix with that pretty heavily. Again, I just, I mentioned that we just finished up Mitchell Street, uh, with the crosswalks, and then the catch basins, I think we did twenty catch basins for rebuilding them up, uh, with brand-new caps, so that was really good. We just finished there, we moved over to Brandyke now, uh, we have probably, uh, another two weeks of work to finish up there, but a quick point that I wanted to bring up too, so, you know, we had much more work over there, right in front of the Thames Valleys, uh, Thames River School, the brand-new Maggden School, and we were able to reach out to, uh, Groton Town, and I spoke with Greg, Greg Hanover, and through him and partnering with him, we were able to get about three hundred feet of sidewalk replaced under the school, uh, project. So it honestly saved us about fifty-five thousand dollars, and I think that's a great example of partnering and opportunities that we have to partner with, with the town on that, and I, I, I took that as a win, so I thought that was really, really good for us. Uh, once we finish there, we'll be moving over to Heinz Avenue, down to Beach Pond, and again, on to any other corrective repairs that we've got going. It's pretty consistent and pretty steady. Uh, the sec- the next step is over to facilities, so we have a piece of that that's, uh, with this building, um, asbestos-containing material abatement. We just finished up, uh, most recently, the finance office, before that, we had a couple of offices that, that Ron occupies and his staff, uh, did that. We'll be mo- looking to move on to the next spaces, and we have a conference room here, we have Ron's, and the director of finances office to go. Uh, we also have, uh, space within the police department to take care of as well, so that's, uh, tile and a mastic underneath, so we get that abated, we get down, new carpet put down, okay? Yes, Paul?
I apologize for interrupting, you do the asbestos abatement, or do you contract that out?
No. We contract it out, yeah, so basically overseeing the project, getting the prices, working with the director of finance and getting that performed, absolutely, yeah.
So, let me interject something real quick, you brought up a good point, so why is Public Works doing this? Bill is also the facilities manager for our facilities, so he is the, he is the Public Works Director, but he also is a manager of facilities. And he has, if you look at the budgets, part of his budget, a part of his salary is budgeted for facilities and also for Public Works. But, and so that's why, you know, he gets into the asbestos part of it.
Yeah, and thank you, yeah, so I have a, I have a pretty good background with, uh, facilities, so I'm happy to help there. Okay, the next thing we have, so, working with Joe Summers, so he has, uh, a, a couple of spaces down in the basement where he stores all of his documents. I too, uh, have material down there, a- as does Leslie and a few others, um, so those are really open-caged spaces. We're really looking to provide a climate-controlled environment for them, so what I'm looking at right now is just getting prices, uh, you know, to, to close in those spaces, get rid of the walls, you know, the fence, the gate, you know, put down, uh, epoxy on the floor, drop ceiling, um, control the humidity and temperature in the space to protect those, uh, assets that we have, really. So, that's, that's a nice little project that we're really looking forward to doing, uh, you know, looking forward, you know, trying to establish a cost, and then how can we fund it? So Joe was being a partner with that pretty well, so that's going pretty well.
And in con- in conjunction with that, we're also doing document control and document management, we have a, a, a group that, where we're sending our documents to them, and then they're taking pictures of them, or they're downloading them, scanning them, and putting them into the cloud. So, there's two parts of this, one, for the documents that we're required to have in hard copy, we need a controlled space to put them. And then for the other documents, we're trying to get them scanned to the cloud, so that we can get rid of all the papers we have. It, it is amazing the amount of documents that a municipality has, some of it is because they keep everything, some of it is because there's a requirement to keep almost everything. So one of the things that when I come in is that, okay, we look at, what are the retention requirements, meet only the retention requirements, don't keep extra stuff if you don't need it, and then let's go to, uh, Scan Optics, that's who we're using, and, uh, and so we have, in everybody's budget, there is, uh, money set aside to do document control, but Bill came to me with this and brought this up, and I said, yep, we need to, let's get this going, let's, and then we'll, once we, uh, figure out the specifics of it, I'll be coming back to council with plans and, uh, how we're gonna finance it. So please continue.
It's a nice little project. Next, on to, so the facility here, windows and a storefront, so we have eighty-six windows on the first floor here that are, have really reached their e- end of life, the gaskets are gone, uh, they don't, they leak badly, uh, it's something that we've been looking at for a couple of years now. Uh, we'd had proposals or, you know, estimates for a couple of years ago, I just recently got new estimates for them, uh, going to be looking at that, you know, how are we going to address this? I believe that is gonna be funded through municipality grants and aids.
Yep, we have municipal grant and aid money that we have aside, plus Ron, help me out with our, with our funding streams on this.
There's, there's a portion of municipal grants and aid, and there's a portion that's coming from the repurpose bond?
So, we had a bond for the Colonel Ledger School, we've repurposed some of that money, that's already been approved, municipal pan- grants and aid are already been approved, this project has already been approved. So you had asked about projects, this is one of the things that we'll be talking about in October, or before if I'm ready, but in October is your deadline. So, but this is, if you look at these windows, actually go in any of the rooms, you'll see how, uh, antiquated they are, and, and, you know, it's hot in the summer and cool in the winter, so, this is- in the summer and cool in the winter. So, this is something that we've been working on for a little bit to get going. And again, COVID gets in the way of, of some of this. But, we're, Bill's ready to move forward. Ron?
Just want to clarify one thing. The project's been approved. The spend has not been approved.
Sorry.
So, once we get the, once we get the bids and all that, then we'll be coming to you with the, with this for the expenditure piece of it.
Right. We had talked to council before about this, but we got to get new, new bids and then we'll come to council for the money.
Right, right. So, thank you. So, I just refreshed the bid. So, not too far out. Hopefully, I'll be working with Ron to get together and get them out the bid. Included in that is the storefront right here, the whole, the three doors plus all the glass in the front. Extra on top of that is the concrete entrance right outside. Now, that's the, right from the storefront, right to the granite steps. Much of it is, is breaking down and it's becoming, you know, a maintenance nightmare. You can patch it. You can touch it up, but it's, you know, it's, it's, it's beyond life. And that's partly because of, you know, the winters and the throwing the salts on it and it deteriorates and that happens. Included in that project would be to look at heating, you know, putting a heat in the pad below the brand new slab so that we never have to throw the salt. So, you know, thinking forward with the, you know, longevity of the project, right, and the life. We don't want to have to do this every ten years. So...
So, if you go out there now, you'll see the patchwork that's out there. And if you're here on a rainy day, you'll also know that the water trough's in the middle. And so, that's a challenge. The other challenge we had is, we went with, okay, we're going to go with salt, but the salt goes, attacks the aluminum facades on the, and the door thresholds. So, then we said, okay, fine, we're not going to go with that. We're going to go with sand. Well, then sand, you get the mud and everything else and that's a problem. So, then we say, okay, we're going to go with a green product. And we're currently with a green product, but it's less effective than either the other two things. And so, Tim Umer's previous director came to me and said, hey, we really need to look at something. And we talked about the redesign, which is to put a heater in there. So, if we have a heater in there that basically defrosted, then there's no, you eliminate that need for the salt, the sand or the green product. And then that also will protect the thresholds and the facades. And so, we're looking at long term and long range. So, that's where we're going with this.
So, a couple of opportunities to go either way. You know, you can go either electric or you can go like a hot glycol loop out there. So, I'm looking, exploring both opportunities. It's, it's a, looking at both, you know, cost, longevity, expected life and how can I maintain it down the road. Okay?
Councilor McCain, do you have a comment?
Oh, I was just curious, um, how many years to pay for itself in terms of buying all the salts or the sand or the whatever? I'd be curious.
Well, okay. So, no, no, I get where you're going. But, let me, let me clarify this. The return on the investment is not just the savings in the salt. It's all the, the patching of the aluminum, the patching of the sidewalks. I mean, there's other things that we need to take into account for the ROI. Okay?
Yeah. And absolutely. So, when I was with the school system, you know, I was a witness to that too. I mean, we had fairly new buildings and new schools and that salt really gets into the door jams. And what we ended up doing was, at the end of the season, we'd power wash everything out of there. Because June, I'd still be finding salt inside of the doors. It wasn't too good. So, that's that. Looking at also PMs on the equipment. So, I have a mechanic right now. We're doing some of the work, self performing a little bit of it. And what I look to do is train him and self perform some of that work. So, you know, an opportunity for savings and it also enriches the employee and keeps them engaged and things. Okay? Lastly, for this particular one is the roof maintenance. Roof here is, so it's a tar and gravel. It has a couple of areas that, that currently leak and, and with yesterday's storm, it was quickly reminding me of what those areas were. Looking at now, you know, how do we, you know, just looking at costs. Should we replace? Should we maintain? You know, so providing some options. So, but that's a recent one. I don't have a lot of information on that, but that's, that's something that's been ongoing for a little while as well. Okay? Okay. Over to goals, visions and opportunities. So, I'm a big safety person. So, one of the things that I started with when I came over to the highway is I wanted to provide the guys, you know, the team with job hazard analysis. And what those are, they're really work packets. So, for instance, somebody that's working on the sanitation trucks, you provide them with a list of all of the hazards, potential hazards that could be out there. Strain, back strains, sharps in the barrels, you know, hydraulics working with winches, you know. And then when they go to do the work, they take the work packet with them and the particular job that they're on, they can identify that the hazards that are there and they can wear the proper PPE. They can perform them in the right direction, you know. Maybe it takes two people, you know, those types of things. So, I created one and we're starting to begin to create others as well. One thing we do every morning now too is a morning toolbox talk. So, all hands. And we try to have one person each week prevent us, you know, present a safety topic. But, it's all about finding engagement in the team, you know. Unify the team, talk about the hazards, you know, give examples of, you know, how, you know, you, you know, you had a friend that hurt himself mowing the lawn. It just, it just is, is a really good thing. It really fosters a safety environment for the team. RCA's, root cause analysis. So, I'm pretty good at those. I've done a number of them in the past. And it's all about preventing accidents going forward. So, if something happens, you know, whether the truck backed into the facility, you know, we had a dump truck up, you know, and we didn't notice it. Guy wasn't paying attention. He backed into, backed into, you know, a building or backed into another vehicle. An RCA really drills down, gets into the root cause of the problem. And then, once you identify that, you communicate that as well to the team. It's, again, it just fosters right into, you know, getting each and every member of the team engaged in safety. Employee development program. We have, what I've found is many silos and I'm looking to break down the silos amongst the teams a little bit. And, you know, it, it's actually being received really well. So, some of the newer staff, they like to be enriched. They, you know, they get tired of doing the same thing every day. And by, by offering up, you know, opportunities for them to spend time with another employee and, hey, I never got a chance to do the line striping. Can you show me that? Or, I never got a chance to, to do a sidewalk. Can you show me that? It's actually, I'm finding that the team is communicating more and more with each other and it's becoming more of a team based approach on repairing and making this work. It's working out really well.
So, the safety thing is something that we've always focused on in the utilities. And one of the things that I looked at when I was here was looking at JHA's and some were doing it better than others. Now, the utility is pretty much, everybody's using JHA's. That philosophy had not been adopted here and some other things. When Bill came in, I knew Bill's background and I have a safety background. So, I talked to him and he identified there's several areas that he wanted to focus on and he's now doing that. And now, I think we're going to bring everybody, all the municipality up to the same level in regards to safety and those kinds of things. Councilor Carter?
I was, when you were, when you were talking about the JHA's and the morning, the morning toolbox and I, and I'm glad you mentioned the, you said the newer employees are like, I, I, I just started thinking about my two, I did two years on, in college, summer, two years in summer. And I was on the dump truck and I did, it was like one of the best jobs ever, you know. And, and the only thing I was, when you said that, I was thinking about some of the old timers that've been there for years and there's no way they would do no morning toolbox or any of that stuff. So, even the talks that you're saying, I mean, and, and I know with the utilities and highways, two separate entities, you know, but, um, implementing all this stuff, like how much is this just to have and just to kind of show, like to, to, to show, okay, this, we have this on the books. And like, how much of this is that as opposed to actually people actually doing that? Like, even the JHA's, I, I don't see any of those guys. I mean, unless you're changing things. I don't see any of those guys like having anything in their back pocket.
We are changing.
More of a joke than anything.
We are changing the culture and getting more to a safety culture. What I've been pushing since I got here was I want us to use safety as a trade skill, right? They know how to operate their equipment. They should understand the safety requirements and how to incorporate that. Because when these guys retire, these guys have a very physical job. So, when they retire and they're rocking on the back porch, I want them to be rocking because they want to rock and they're having a good time, not because they can't get out of the damn chair because they're crippled, because they, they didn't use the right PPE or the right techniques or have the right equipment. I mean, we've had issues in the past with hearing protection. We've had issues in the past with not having gel gloves. I mean, at one point, we had a pair of gel gloves that everybody shared. And when I found out about that, I went nuts. I'm like, we can afford to buy the gloves for guys that are on the jackhammers and guys that are using the, so to avoid the Renard syndrome, you know, of the, of the repetitive, the repetitiveness of those kind of things. And so, we are, I, I've asked John, who is our safety consultant, and I asked before that to, to come over here and spend some time here as well as the utility and make sure that we're incorporating the safety culture here. So, it's not just for show. It's not just to say, look, you know, here's what we're, here's what we have. We're really trying to change the culture. Now, you're right. There are guys that got ten, fifteen years on the truck. They're, they're going to be resistant to this.
I thought right.
Absolutely. They're going to be resistant.
Not kidding.
And it's going to take us a little bit of time to win some people over. But, once people see that there's a genuine interest in this and that we really care about our employees, they'll understand that and they'll take us on board. I've, I've seen it in the past in places that, where I've been in charge before and it works. It'll work if you're consistent and you work with the guys and meet them where they are, the men and women, and meet them where they are initially and then get them to where we need them to be. So, you're right. There's going to be some resistance.
So, counselor, that's a great comment. And you know what? I can say that, you know, I lived it and, and I understand. And I too was one of the ones that said, you know, this is the way I've always done it. But, you know, when you stay the course and, and you've got a couple of people in it maybe that are naysayers, but they see the rest of the team coming on board, you'd be surprised that they all come in. And you know what? God forbid that, that they're one of the ones that would have gotten hurt if they, you know, that would have prevented it if they'd done something the other way. So, I've seen the cultures change and, and again, I've been saying that same thing and over time, I've switched over to...
Oh, no, no, I was, yeah, yeah. I wasn't trying to sinuate that, that they're not being safe by any means. I'm just accentuating when you have a, a group of, the dynamics one way.
Yep.
And you have somebody feeling like they're trying orders. It's micromanagement or wherever. They, they don't feel like they need to be told to do something. That's just what it is.
But, the attitude starts from the top and works down. And you, and you, you got to start at the top and you got to, people need to know that, look, I'm not going to let up on this. I know you don't, I know if you're out there, but if I'm on the job, because let me tell you something, I have driven around and stopped at job sites. And I look and I watch and then I'll go back to whoever the director is or the supervisor and say, hey, I think they need double hearing protection here or were they wearing the right gloves? Were they, when I first got here, we were pouring concrete in shorts and tank tops. Okay? Go read SDS and the SDS will tell you not to do that. And so, I brought it up. We evaluated it. Safety guys talked to them. Yep, it's hot out there, but we're going to give you more water. We'll give you Gatorade. We'll make sure that you're hydrated. We'll give you brakes if you need to have brakes. But, it's about protecting them so that they don't have contact dermatitis and those kind of things as a result of irritants from the, from the concrete. And then just recently, I don't remember, the year before last, I think, is when the new silica requirements came out from OSHA about cutting concrete and, and other things that are silica producing and having to make sure you, you wet them down so you don't have airport, you don't have airborne hazards and breathing and those kind of things. And so, the, the city has, has changed its direction on a lot of things. We have had a Con OSHA inspection here and we did well. We had some problems, some challenges. But, one of the things that I'd recognized when we got here was respiratory protection program. And I was, and I was told, yep, we're good, mayor. And then we got hit on it because it wasn't everything it needed to be. Now, we're doing the annual requirements. We have a mobile lab that comes up and we have people in the, we have respiratory protection, but also an auto metric program that we do for people that are required. And we're, we have a, a new commitment to keep any employees safe.
You know, you think about the, the team that's out, you know, you've seen them day after day up on Mitchell and you think about the hazards, right? Their proper lifting techniques, the oncoming traffic, you know, the, the weather, overhead power lines. And you know what? You do it day after day after day, it becomes mundane. You really don't pay attention. I'm just going to go out and do the same thing. But, when you grab the work packet and somebody grabs it and you go out and the scene changed, right? The weather changed. You moved further down the road. Now, now you're right underneath the lines. The traffic is a little bit different. They go out, they check it, they identify the hazards and that's what they prepare for.
And, and this is done upfront. I mean, Councilor Carter, it's not like, okay, your next step is to pour two feet of concrete. Okay, that step's done. Next step, this is not a nuclear package. This is, you know, you're, you're incorporating safety steps into the procedures. And then basically, they do it, they do a, a talk, a pre-job brief, if you will, and say, okay, here's what we're doing. Let's talk about the hazards. Okay, now we go do the job. So, they probably touch that piece of paper one time and that's at the beginning of the job. Somebody may reference it later just to make sure. But, it's not a, you know, here, I got this piece of paper. Okay, we're going to put this down. Councilor Norris?
Thank you. Just before you wrap up, I wanted to say, Public Works is one of those things that engagement usually doesn't happen. So, I am absolutely thrilled that while we talk about safety and all the, obviously, the benefits of safety, is that you do talk about engagement. Because the more we engage our employees one to one as a team and as a unit, you know you get a better product of what they do. And the leadership is shown by the simple fact of you talking about it and getting those folks engaged. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, it takes really five or 10 minutes at the beginning of the shift each day and then off they go.
Bill, what else, what's left?
Quickly, just, you got another slide? Megan? Quickly, the other one that I have following up is computerized maintenance management systems. And this is my final couple of slides here. So, CMMS, you hear the term all the time. It's all about collecting the data, which allows you to, to make intelligent decisions. It's, I've been using them for years. We have an archaic system that we use in the highway and we, we use it probably for 10% of its capacity, if that. We do not utilize it at all in the facilities yet. Okay? So, highways, what I want, my goal, my vision is, you know, I talked earlier about the, you know, the customers calling in with complaints and stuff. We're the eyes and the ears. We're right there on the streets every day. I want my team to go out there, identify repairs that, that we need to perform. I want them to go out and estimate how many hours it's going to take. Create a bill of material for the work and provide a checklist of, you know, I need a heavy lift guy and two labors to do the work. And then they can create a work order and all of that stuff sits in the queue, right? And then we can also create a priority for it. Do it, does it need to be done this week? Does it need to be done next month? Can it be done six months from now? Is it seasonal? So, what you do then is you build a queue of work. What you do with that queue of work is you manage that. You, you move the priorities around as needed. If I've got, world class is really, you want to have at least three works, three weeks work for the team that you had. So, if I've got, you know, 10 people and, and times, you know, eight hours a day, I want to have that many hours in the backlog of work. That tells me, that tells me how to manage a staff. People ask me right now, how many people do you need? I need them all. That means nothing to me. What means something to me is that, you know, I've got this much work out there. This is how many people I need to perform it. If a guy retires, do I need to replace him? Right now, I'm, you know, the default is always, yeah, you need another guy. But, you really need to validate that. And that's really best class. That's really where you want to go. You really want to manage and focus on making sure that you're efficient and timely with the repairs and everything. So, there's a lot that really goes with a computerized maintenance management system. So there's a lot that really goes with a computerized maintenance management system. While we're looking at the jobs, we can preorder the material. You know, one of the things we deal with, one of the hardships with us is the, the weather. Or, or a person calls out sick, I've got, you know, a job scheduled for tomorrow. Well, right now, I can't guarantee that I'm going to do that work because I might have Tom call out sick or it might rain. When I have a backlog of work, I can shape shift the schedule like that. You know, hey, I don't need those three guys to get on this job right now, I've got another, you know, job that I can do indoors or, you know, it's not really weather reliant and I can move them around. It really ups your efficiency. And that's what you want to be. Yeah, you know, uh, if I can get a, a worker to turn wrenches five to six hours a day, that's world-class. That's really where you want. Fleet management, uh, that also plays into the CMMS system. You know, my assets, I should, I should be able to provide you with, you know, operating cost per vehicle. You know, what it costs me for repairs for the end of the year. There's some labor costs, you know, I should be able to provide you with, what is the cost for the city for 100 feet of sidewalk? What is the cost for every catch base and every repair? That's, all of that data goes into this system and I'll be able, you know, give you that data. It's really where we want to go. Last slide is just about facilities, it's the same thing. Asset management, you know, uh, we have air handlers on the roof, backflow preventers downstairs in the basement, water heaters, things like that. I need to get all of that into the, into the data system. I need to build the PMs, I need to estimate how many hours that are there. I need to spread that across the year. Um, and, and then, you know, right now, what's happening is I've got, um, Simplex Brunel calling me, hey, I've got something due next week. You know, I, I'm not ahead of them yet. I really need to know what work I'm going to be performing in October, what I'm going to be doing in November and December and I can schedule and staff that accordingly. That's what a computerized maintenance management system does for you. Lastly too, it talks about bad actors. That's, you know, you, how many touches? You know, if I'm touching that air handler, you know, six times and, and, and my guy's going up there and just restarting it and restarting it, I'm wasting a lot of labor. He's going up and doing it. What, what's truly the root cause of that problem? What's the failure? I could have something amok with, uh, you know, the instrumentation controls going to it. So you start, you can use this system to, to modify and to manage your assets. You know, you start running reports out of the CMMS system, so you know, which asset's got the most touches? It's, it's truly a tool that one can't live without. And that's just about it. Questions?
Anything for Bill, uh, Councilor Piazza?
Maybe it's just a comment when you're talking about, uh, the workers. So the other day, they were out on Mitchell Street and it was extremely hot and made me think about, I mean, I've done, uh, safety officer in military, I've done it for Home Depot, done fraud with them. I also do safety with the bus company. So on a whole, it made me think about it. But more so in the military is, so when you talk about ocean and so forth and so on, um, it makes me think when you say you have this paper, do you actually have, we used to have hip pocket guides? So, you know, do they actually have a leader within the team that says, you know, say I'm looking at heat category? You know, so within, so now it's, the humidity is this and our heat category is that, we need to stop, you know? Um, and also I relate to dancing is because in dancing, when you do something mundane over and over and over again, it's when you get relaxed into that technique is where your injury occurs. So, um, I just wanted to say I'm really thankful because I know how, I've been out in the streets working and it's like, you know, it's like awful. But when you say that, do they have something like that? I know we have OSHA, you don't actually have somebody, you know, because I wasn't in many medical units, so we always have somebody on hand. But, you know, I'm assuming that's collectively within the work. So when you're looking at safety hazards, is that also in the safety of the workers per se and how, and, what do I want to say, making sure that they're okay in order to complete the task through the day?
So we've spent much time partnering up with John Bernardo, who's come in and he's a safety rep and he's been attending some of our meetings and, and we, we discussed some of the difficulties that we have or some of the, you know, the old, we've always done it that way, hypologic and, and he's really supportive for that. Steve Baker, my supervisor there, he, he's very good with that. He's, he's boots on the ground, he's there every day. And again, and you see the, you know, it is, it's difficult with an aging, you know, workforce to get change. You know, so how do you manage change? You come out with a vision, you stay the course and you follow up. I'm sorry, thank you. But, uh, yeah, things are, we're gaining ground.
Any other questions or comments for the director? Okay, that's it. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you all.
Sierra, are you? Yeah, but I thought I saw her. There she is. All right, the next one is economic development. So Sierra, you have the floor.
Good evening, you guys again. So, um, the camera doesn't pan over there, right?
I can give it a try.
You can give it a try. Can I take the mic over there?
Yep.
Okay. So I wanted to share with you guys a display that I'm doing with the community. So planning and economic development is reaching out and really wants to hear from people. So, um, I'll discuss this display with you guys. Hopefully you guys can, um, stay after shortly. I know it's kind of late night, but participate in a few of the activities. If not, it will be up in the lobby for the next couple of weeks. And I will also be at the concerts in the park this Friday, um, to discuss it even further. So just going through some of the panels really quickly. Um, just an introduction for any of the individuals that don't know Leslie and myself. Then we move down to our strategic communications initiative. Um, this QR code at the bottom is for anyone who has not signed up for the newsletter. I do highly recommend that people do sign up and encouraging you guys to get out and share that information. I know tonight we've talked a lot about community engagement and education. The newsletter is a great resource for people to start to, um, learn about the initiatives. And especially even with, um, Public Works, I know Heidi does include a lot of educational resources in there as well, as well as some of the other departments, but I know that came up today. Um, so that's this QR code. We are currently doing a survey for this just to understand um, the community's perception of the city of Groton and some of our, um, assets here. So if you guys will participate in that. A reminder that, um, the first annual brew run is September 12th. Moving over here, we are asking people, where would they like to see public art in the city of Groton? So if you just take a sticker and place it anywhere on here, um, at the concert, I did have a resident mention that you'll notice a circle green sticker. She wanted to depict more landscaping kind of art. So we were talking about different kinds of art, murals, statues, um, and she thought landscaping was one. So if you guys are wondering what that circle is, um, you guys can feel free to continue that, that momentum here. On this side, we are asking, where do you walk or bike in the city of Groton? For, um, for walking, place a green sticker, for biking, place an orange sticker. And, um, for this, you, whether it's an area or a, um, specific road that you walk or bike on, um, that's kind of the goal of where you would like to aim that sticker. So moving over here, our main question is what type of mixed-use development would you guys support in both Thane Street and Five Corners neighborhood? Um, Leslie, maybe a couple of months ago now, did a presentation to you guys for Missing, The Missing Middle. Um, I, I pulled a diagram from her, um, presentation to kind of highlight that. We're trying to understand or find out what is the city's missing middle for mixed-use development specifically. So on this side of the board, we have existing images of the city, um, of Thane Street and the Five Corners. And then on these two panels, we have different depictions of types of development. Um, you'll notice they're kind of labeled on her missing to the middle so we can kind of continue in the purview of that conversation. But you'll notice density, setting, scale. And so the idea is to put stickers on the places that you feel envision your vision for Thane Street or Five Corners. Um, if none of these images do really grasp that vision, there are index cards here to, for you to, um, jot down your thoughts and place them in this gold box. Um, and Thane Street is the green sticker, Five Corners is the orange sticker. And any questions?
Questions, Sierra. Deputy Mayor Depot.
I really like this display thing. I think it's a cool, interactive thing. Have we considered bringing it to the farmer's market as well? Cause I feel like that gets a lot of traffic and probably traffic from people who would answer these questions.
We, we have talked about having a tent at the farmer's market. We have not acted on that yet, but that's a good idea to have a tent and then move to the farmer's market. That way we could do lots of things. One, economic development stuff, but other stuff we want to get out about the city. Farmer's Market from Tuesday from three to six. Anything else for Sierra?
So get ready for tomorrow.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you, Sierra. All right, so we're going to move on to 742, which is Groton Utilities.
Oh, I will stay for a little bit, like after, if you guys do have any questions in regards to this.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can go home. I'm, I got a feeling they're not staying. We're gonna, we're gonna get through these and then we're going to be done, I think. Okay, the first one is Saber Industries, Ron?
Saber, um, I can't remember if it was this council or before. But we're currently working on, uh, the refeeding the Buddington substation, which has three high voltage lines coming in. Those high voltage lines need to have new steel towers purchased. So the engineering firm specified the steel towers. The steel towers are being, we're using the sole source agreement that was approved by city council to use the suppliers in the same building standards that Eversource is using. Because Eversource owns the lines right up until they hit the town of Groton Line. At the town of Groton Line, they convert over to Groton Utilities, the city property. So we're replacing those towers using a similar design as the Eversource lines. And this purchase is to buy those steel towers, get those steel towers on order to complete the project all the way to Buddington from the town line.
Questions on this project? Counselor Sheffield?
Ron, uh, I see here this iron poles, is that a difference of steel or iron? This is 742A, is that what I'm looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe these poles rust themselves to, to be, to like paint for protection. So they kind of rust themselves to be there forever and stop corroding.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. I will, uh, need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine, seven, twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
A motion to the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Before you move on, I want to just say something real quick. We just went through Hurricane Storm Henri. We had about 4,000 people, the, 4,000 power outages. GU responded and by midnight, power was 100% restored. Now, the, as a result of that, one of the things we do in preparing for the storm is we buy food for the crews for the, the anticipated period of time. So we ended up overbuying food. So now I have perishable food and we have, we have no mechanism for giving that away. So what I am doing is I am signing a letter, uh, we've, we're working with the senior center. Social Services won't take perishable food. Senior Center will, but they won't take it all. Uh, we're checking with the United Way to see if they'll take it. If they will, their second choice, the overflow for Senior Center. If not, then we're going to give it to the soup kitchen over New London. So, um, this is, I wanted to take a quick opportunity to tell the council that I intend to sign a letter tomorrow morning authorizing us, the utility, to give the food to Senior Center, possibly United Way, and then the soup kitchen. So I just wanted to let you know. Deputy Mayor Depot?
If we have a capacity issue where they can't take the food, maybe we could call the local churches? Because oftentimes they have kind of a community connection of people who might need food?
Yeah, we can look at that if we need to. Right now, we think that, we know the Senior Center will take a large part of it.
Okay.
They won't take it all. Soup Kitchen will take the rest.
Oh, okay.
And so, but I asked to go to the United Way because the United Way definitely supports the city side. I wanted to keep it in the city or the town, uh, but we, we, we didn't have anybody else. I do know that the soup kitchen, uh, is a regional thing and that does help. So, uh, but you're right, the churches is always something else that we can look at. So my apologies, Ron. Go to the next one, which is Atlantic Fluid Technology.
No, and thank you, Mayor, for helping know me with that project. Atlantic Fluid Technology is the replacement of the pumps at the Eastern Point Pump Station. The Eastern Point Pump Station, the pumps are extremely old. They're, um, and next month, you're actually going to see, we're trying to work on replacing, um, all the parts and pieces of the pump station. You're going to see, hopefully, um, a request for purchase of generator, a new generator for that pump station. Additionally, we had it on the list to do, um, roofs, but currently we're in backlog on the roofing projects because, uh, apparently China makes all the rubber for roofs and we can't get anybody to bid on our roofing projects. So we're currently doing the Eastern Point Pump Station in dribs and drabs. So you're seeing the pumps right now, the replacement in kind pumps that fit on the bases that currently exist. So it ends up being like a sole source, there's only one kind of manufacturer that'll fit. There's a 20% contingency because we cannot get a quote on the pumps to be firm for more than a few days at a time, like five days, because of availability and all the issues with supply issues on COVID. Uh, Bill was talking about the windows here. I mean, I, we do not have the windows in for the new filtration plant that we have in, in progress, nor the siding and yet, and that is running months and months late because of the supply issues with COVID. So that's why there's a 20% on this. Once you approve it, we'll get a final quote and then we'll actually go and issue the purchase order for the actual price. So it's, it's not that we're not trying to do our job, it's, the job is really hard right now.
Anything else on Atlantic Fluid? Okay, uh, questions for the director? Counselor Norris?
What is the lifespan on these pumps?
Typically, you, you replace pumps, you, you do like a, a five to an eight-year rebuild on a pump. And after about three rebuilds, you need to replace it. I, it, it's, I, I thought I had written down exactly how old these were because when, uh, Ray did the presentation to the utility commission, I think he said how old they are.
Right.
I believe they're as old as the station.
Yeah, I think it was ninety-seven.
Is it in there?
Ninety-seven.
Okay.
All right, last question I have. So the 112,400, how old is that dollar figure? Is it 30 days, 90 days?
On the quote?
Yes.
The, the date should be on the quote, August 10th?
I apologize. Oh, last week? Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine, seven, twenty-one?
So moved.
Motion to the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. STAN-TAC Consulting Engineering Agreement?
As everybody's aware, the new filtration plant is a $54 million project. It's been humming along. We're way over date on the finish date of the project. RH White, the contractor, uh, is currently, they've already been warned that, uh, we, uh, they've been written a letter that says that we will enact liquidated damages as part of the negotiation process to close this project. Liquidated damages. Liquidated damages for the project run on the order of magnitude of thirty-five hundred dollars a day. The reason that the construction contract has liquidated damages in it is because when a project runs over, there's engineering costs and other costs that start to build up. So those liquidated damages are to allow funding to allow that to get paid for without causing a project to go over budget. So this, um, Stantec would not extend the, uh, finish date of the project without this change order for seventy thousand dollars. So it's purely to allow Stantec, the engineering firm, to extend the date to, what was it? The end of October.
Any questions on this line item?
And, and I am going to promise that we are going to come back, uh, into a closeout on the whole project with council because, um, especially this council has not lived, the saga, uh, for lack of a better word. So, um, we, we are going to be doing closeouts and coming back, especially as we start negotiating with close of the construction contract, the Stantec contract and everything else. This has been a very complicated project, uh, and we have spent a lot of time in this room talking about it. I will, I will go anywhere you want to talk about it at any point. May not be the time tonight.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding this? Okay, seeing none. I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine seven twenty-one?
So moved.
Move a motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Pocatonic Cove Bridge Project?
So the Pocatonic Cove Bridge Project is one of the cross connects that was required by the DPH upon the city in order to get the fifteen million dollar grant that we got to help fund the fifty-four million dollar water filtration project. So this is the last cross connect from the city's water system to neighboring water systems that we're required to do to fulfill the grant requirements. That this cross connect happens to cross the Pocatonic Cove Bridge. It's a fairly new bridge. The piping and the bridge itself is fairly, is very brand new. In the agreement that was signed, we're required to come up with a cost share agreement with Norwich Public Utilities. Norwich and the utility agreed to share the costs at fifty, fifty percent. And then, uh, we are managing the project, uh, as the utility project group. And we will be bill, bit, billing out to Norwich Public Utilities fifty percent on a monthly basis as the project moves forward. Very similar to projects like what might be at EB when we're expanding our services to their new station and that's a customer paid project. We bill them as we go. So that's where the funding comes from. So we are paying half of this project. Norwich Public Utilities is funding the other half. In our budget, we have a million dollars budgeted. Right. I, I, so we have a million and it's anticipated that the total spend would be, um, something less than that. The project's anticipated, I think it was, uh, one point six million, uh, right now. So this specific resolution is to cut the purchase order to the contractor to do the work.
Questions or comments on this line item? This agenda item? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of nine seven twenty-one?
So moved. Second.
Move a motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Ron. I'm going to, uh, forego discussion of financials for the city and for the utility in order to, do you want to go through them? Or are you ready to go? I mean, Ron can go through them or you, I mean, it is, it is late. This is, say again?
You guys can do it, but I'm going to ask you to excuse myself.
Fine. You can, we still have a, we still have a corner. We don't necessarily need a corner because we're not voting on anything. This is informational. So if you need to leave, go right ahead. I understand. Thank you. This is why we don't have these at seven thirty anymore. We moved them back to six in the event that they do run long. I try to keep them short, but, uh, the very first one that we had tonight took us over an hour. So, all right, Ron, go ahead. We'll go about Groton Utilities financials.
So we'll just go through these as we normally do. As you remember, last month, we did not present them. And what we said was we're going to do the June ones. This month, allow that extra month of closeout to true up the expenditures with some of that AP. There's still maybe some additional entries that need to be required on both sides, but at least it lets that AP process catch up on the expender, sure, speed side of it. And I apologize, these are very small this month. So we'll start with the electric division and it's on page six and we'll go to the year to date. We'll start off on row nineteen, total electric revenue was forty-nine million versus a budget of forty-eight point two or over budget of six hundred and fifty-four thousand. Those again were driven, um, pretty much stayed consistently throughout the whole year, driven mainly by the residential and the industrial with the commercial lagging behind. Again, that's the trend that we saw all year with the electric and we'll see it across the board. Total, um, operating expenses, row thirty-seven were forty-four point two million versus a budget of forty-five point four million or one point two million under budget. Row forty-three, operating earnings came in at just under five million dollars versus a budget of three point one or one point eight million favorable. Low, row fifty-two, the net income from operations came in at just under five point two million versus a budget of, uh, two point nine million for a favorable budget of two point two five, two point two two five, um, favorable to the budget for the net income from operations for electric. So you see that, again, the main drivers of that is the over, um, over budget of revenues and the under budget of the expenditures. So again, just the, as we wrapped up June, it pretty much stayed consistent with the trends that we were seeing throughout the year.
Any questions on electric? Okay, moving on.
We'll switch to, go to water, which is page twelve for the year to date. Row seventeen, total water revenue is eleven point six million versus a budget of eleven million, five hundred and eighteen thousand favorable. Again, same trends that we saw throughout the year with the water, with the residential and industrial, um, being favorable to budget and the commercial lagging behind. Row thirty, total operating expenses came in at ten point eight million versus a budget of eleven point one million or favorable of three hundred and sixty-five thousand. The net earnings before the DW SRF grant, which is row forty-four, came in at just over one million versus a budget of negative one point one million, one point two million for a favorable of two point three million. The big piece there, which you'll see, um, is favorable in that other deduction is that interconnect that we just went through with the approval that was budgeted for in this year and then it got carried into the next year just because of timing. So that was the big change in that, um, row thirty-five. That's just why it came out so favorable. So that's the overview of water. Again, same thing as we've been seeing the trending all year.
Questions on water? Okay, sewer?
Sewer, we'll go to page seventeen. Row fifteen, the total sewer revenue came in at four point five million versus a budget of four point three million or a hundred and eighty-four thousand favorable. Again, same as in the water, you'll see that the favorable to budget was the residential industrial. As you recall, the industrial, we did have a customer with deduct meters that did not get the credit at one point throughout the year based on bad reading. So, um, that's what led to the, the hire in the industrial. Look at the total operating expenses, row twenty-six, came in at three million versus a budget of three point six or six hundred and twenty-six favorable. Row thirty-seven, the net income from operations came in at just under one point four million versus a budget of four hundred and thirteen thousand or nine hundred and forty-one thousand favorable. So again, the trend, even as we were closing out the year, stayed very consistent with the trends that we saw each month throughout.
Okay, questions on sewer? All right, and that's it for Groton Utilities. So then the last item is city budget presentation?
And like I said, there will, on the city side, there's definitely some more adjustments that we, we have going, but this is our, kind of the expenditures year to date as a snapshot as they are right now before some final adjustments. Um, what I'll do is I'll take a, and give you a quick overview on some of the larger variances, um, and what has potentially caused those. The biggest, we'll start, I'll go down, I'll pick, I'll just go with the ones over a hundred thousand. First one you'll see is financial administration, which is a hundred and six thousand favorable to the budget. That is, um, based on staffing. We still have a vacancy in the department and we had, it was about a half a year, if not three quarters of a year of another opening. So it was just a, a timing of getting big, um, positions filled. So that's led to that variance there. The building inspection of the nine hundred and seventeen thousand, as you recall, we do the budget for this. This has to do with a set aside for, um, contractual services. Right now, we have somebody on staff for, for the big project that is going on, um, that requires additional inspections. So we, we, when we did this through two years ago, three years ago, we set aside the one point two million, what it would be if we contracted that out. And each year, we just scale it down based on what we actually spent. So it's kind of a set aside in case we need additional inspection services. And that's what created that large variance of the nine hundred and seventeen thousand. The police sees a hundred and two thousand over budget. That was mainly driven by overtime. I don't have the specific backups for it, but I think there was some outside services that was included in there and some additional overtime, but I can get some more information on that.
And, and we've also had some staffing issues and so therefore we've had to have increased overtime for shifts.
And during COVID, we did. So we did, went to the twelves.
You're right, we did.
And changed some things up just to protect officers and keep them with the same groupings. The next one, fire, a hundred and forty-two thousand. Again, that's similar to the building inspection line item. We have a hundred thousand set aside in there for, um, additional inspection services that may come up based on the project. And again, those ones just rolling, we've been rolling those year to year as we have not been used them.
Are for additional third party reviews if we need them.
And then the final one, which we, we didn't, um, touch this year, um, was the contingency, which is the hundred and fifteen thousand. I didn't feel like we needed to do a transfer up. We had talked about it. I know at one point with the additional election of moving that up, as you can see, the admin budget is a little bit into the negative. And we had talked about that when we had, um, the additional election cost about moving up, but we just let that one kind of go over and this is going to be, be, uh, under budget to net it out instead of coming to you and doing a transfer.
Counselor Sheffield?
So are, how many officers are we short as far as staffing wise to create the additional overtime?
We're down, currently down three.
Three.
We have requisitions out for three. Uh, we just had a dispatcher put in that they're leaving.
We, we've also had maternity.
We are, absolutely. We also, uh, we have a young police force and as a result of that, we have moms and dads. So we've had some, uh, FMLA issues, not issues, but FMLA and therefore the makeup with that and overtime. Any other questions or any other comments on the city budget?
I did, I did not, I actually skipped over those. I need to go back and look, I actually didn't make notes on theirs. I'm guessing that theirs is driven based on the COVID and the programming, obviously with the beach being limited scheduling last year and some of the other things. But I, let me go back and get, get the true depth answers for that one. I, I don't recall offhand.
This is from last year, right?
The park and rec. And then, and I.
Well, I think some of this may be COVID related regarding recreation programs and possibly beach staffing as well. But, yeah, you're right, we should go ask, we should go look at this closer.
Let me take a look at that. And the other thing that may be there is if some of the capital may not have gotten transferred to the CNR fund, that, the undone. So that could be the driver there.
That could be the driver too. You're right, it could be a capital issue.
And if, and if that is the case, if there is capital there, what will happen is that will get transferred over to the capital non-recurring fund. And that way, it still will be earmarked for those budget items. And again, the spend will have to come to you for approval to use it, but it'll, it doesn't get lost.
Right. And you'll see that coming up when we talk about the capital projects. Here also, the capital project list, uh, shows, I think it was eighteen to twenty-three, but there are other projects that we have done with other funds that are considered capital projects, but did not make that list. So when I come to you with capital projects, we're going to talk about all the capital projects, not ju, that list specifically is our first go by. And then there's other projects that we've authorized and or, and either authorized and or completed. So that'll be coming to you. Anything else on this? Counselor Norris?
You've explained this five times and I just never remember. The contingency, so that one fifteen, I guess it's part of the general question. So all the, the numbers calculated and the variance, what happens to those dollars?
So if, if these were one hundred percent final right now and say that these are audited, there's no more adjustments and that we were a hundred, one point seven million favorable, that would revert back into the fund balance of the general fund, which then would allow us to utilize fund balance in future budgets, which like we did in the current year, we used a big chunk of the fund balance. So it rolls back in and then it'll, we would, in theory, use it to offset future expenses.
And one of the things that our lenders are looking at, they want us to be between twenty, twenty-five percent. Uh, and so, you know, we're looking at debt. We also have, uh, the, the funds that we have out there, uh, for the contingency that we're using because one of the things that I'm looking at is probably in twenty-three or twenty-four, the fees are going to start to come down to what normal is. And then the COs have not started paying off yet. Or if they have started paying off, they'll start up at twenty percent for five years based on the enterprise zone that's in the, uh, that EB's in. And then before it gets to a hundred percent for the grant list. So there is a, there's a V notch there that I've been focusing on and been planning on so that we could either let, keep taxes level or minimize the increase based on the way that we're managing our funds. And then at that point, we'll probably start tapering down or maybe stop CIPs for a small period of time until, uh, the grant list catches up so that we don't negatively impact taxes. So that's one of the reasons we're able to do the capital projects now is because we have the fees, the proj, uh, the project fees or permit fees rather, that have given us that, that positive cash flow. So any other questions on this? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, okay? Thank you, counsel. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for your time.